Good evening, everyone. This is the November 16, 2017, joint meeting of the DeKalb City Council and the city's Finance Advisory Committee. In just a moment, I will give you sort of a lay of the land, if you will, of what we're going to be doing tonight. Prior to that, we must have a roll call, and I'm going to ask our deputy city clerk, Carrie Parker, who is sitting in for Sue Herman, who was not able to be with us tonight. Carrie, roll call, please.
For formality, I call the meeting of the Finance Advisory Committee to order.
Thank you.
Jacobson?
Here.
Mark Clark?
Here.
Fagan?
Here.
Noriko?
Here.
Burbick?
Here.
Faber?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Southern, present for council.
And perhaps I'll follow your formality, Mike, and I'll call the meeting of the DeKalb City Council to order.
For Finance Advisory Committee, Peddle?
Here.
Conlin?
Here.
Neely?
Here.
Parker?
Here.
Parch?
Here.
Terazinski?
Here.
I declare that there is a quorum for the Finance Advisory Committee.
There is a quorum for the DeKalb City Council. Okay, before we get on with the activity tonight, and the activity basically is contained on one agenda item, and that is the discussion on the FY 2018 Proposed Annual Budget. Mike Peddle and I have not co-hosted a meeting like this. Mike has before with some of my predecessors. As your new mayor, relatively new, I'm going to ask Mike to keep me on the straight and narrow. If you're able to do that, Mike, I'll give you full credit. This is what I see tonight's meeting being. We're first going to ask city manager Anne Marie Gora to speak on the structure of the meeting tonight, missing, putting in some of the missing elements that I may be missing here. She is going to specifically address what this city council asked for the other night, and that is a detailed report on the 5% expenditure reductions in the general fund. She's asking the department heads to speak, five minutes or less, I'm told, on their specific, or what the impact of those reductions would be on their departments and on their services. After those presentations, what I'd like to do, Mike, if we could, is to provide the general direction on how we would like the council and the Finance Advisory Committee to proceed with that expenditure reduction information. I would ask the folks in the audience and to those of you who are watching tonight at home to realize that we will be making no firm decisions tonight. We would not be taking a vote, per se. But I think by the end of the evening, hopefully, we will have gained some consensus. Let the minute show that First Ward Alderman Dave Jacobson has arrived. And as usual, I'm sure David will have a few comments here and there throughout the meeting. Hello, David. After this body discusses the expenditure reduction information, I would then ask Finance Director Molly Talkington to speak on the estimated property tax levy that is 105.2% greater than last year. We'll also have discussion on that. I would then ask Chair Mike Peddle to discuss the Finance Advisory Committee's recommendations, and those will come into play, obviously, as we discuss these other items, I'm sure. We already have had three or four folks ask that during the public participation section of tonight's meeting. They have filled out a speaker request form. If everyone, if anyone in the audience who has not filled out a speaker request form, they are on the back. If you would please do that and let, and give it to Carrie Parker, and she'll give it to me. Mike, does that sound like a fair assessment of the lay of the land, if you will?
It does, and as we agreed, I have some preparatory comments as well that I've been asked to make in terms of clarifying the role of the Finance Advisory Committee with respect to the discussion.
Anne Marie, would you feel comfortable if Mike were to do that now?
Absolutely.
Why don't you make those preparatory remarks, if you will, Mike, now?
Okay. First of all, the Finance Advisory Committee met, I think, a half a dozen times since the last budget cycle. And contrary to what may have been an impression on the part of some people, the discussions were significantly deeper, significantly more involved, and involved the entire committee. The product that you see in the recommendations made to the city council is a product of the entire committee. There is not a single committee member that didn't vote against at least one of the recommendations. There is not a committee member who didn't vote in favor of multiple of the recommendations. These are recommendations as a group, and in fact, some of the most major recommendations that were made were, the source of those recommendations were newer members of the Finance Advisory Committee as opposed to the people that you hear from on a regular basis. The foundation of what the Finance Advisory Committee has presented to the city council is our best advice as a group in terms of financial advice from a set of people with some expertise in some area of finance, be it nonprofit finance, be it accounting, be it banking, and it's a sum effort. And we focused primarily on providing the best financial advice that we could provide independent of other considerations such as the political votes that the city council will need to take. And there are going to be some difficult decisions. So what is the best path, in our opinion, and there was some disagreement on some issues, for the city with respect to these different issues? Anytime you're talking about tax increases, you are in a very, very difficult kind of situation. We did not take that discussion lightly, and we made what we felt were decisions and recommendations that were in the best interest of the city, its citizens, its visitors, its businesses, and other stakeholders. Finally, and this, I will keep this very, very narrow because the narrowness with which I make the following statement is the least controversial of the statement applying it in a wider fashion. The city has a financial policy with respect to the funding of pensions. Okay? In the past, the city council has failed to meet its fiduciary responsibility to adhere to those policies, nor has it met its fiduciary responsibility to the city, which goes, is apart from any responsibility to the taxpayer. They are separate. If you're on a nonprofit board, or if you're on the board of a private sector firm, you have a fiduciary responsibility to the organization for which you are on the board. With respect to the recommendation that the city council has made, with respect to the property tax and pensions, once again, each member of the city council who voted in favor of that is violating their fiduciary responsibility and in other circumstances could be personally liable for that kind of behavior. So I encourage you to not only consider the political aspects of what is politically palatable in the community, but also consider, and I will narrowly say it with respect to the pensions, because that's something that is tangible and something that's part of the financial policy. If you don't fully finance those, you're violating your fiduciary responsibility. And fully finance them through the property tax.
Thank you, Mike. Okay, at Monday night's city council meeting, the city council directed staff, specifically city manager Anne Marie Gora and our finance director Molly Talkington, to provide the city council with cuts ranging from 2.5% to 5%. It was our expectation that we might get that tonight. More likely than not, we would get it for the November 27 meeting or another special meeting if we were to have called that. Staff has been working hard, and we have a document that has been given to us tonight. And I'm going to ask Anne Marie Gora to walk us through that.
All right.
And I guess it will be point by point.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So just as an overview, before I get into the budget presentation, we're going to move through basically the memo that says fiscal year 2018 budget reduction options. After I give the overview, I'm going to ask the department heads and the order that's presented in the memo to come speak at the podium. For those in the audience or watching at home, all this information has been posted to the website. As the mayor said, we have been working diligently as staff to get all this information together. So typically, this would go out in advance, but we viewed it was more important to preview it with you tonight during the joint city council Finance Advisory Committee meeting to give you enough time between now and your November 27 city council meeting to absorb it and decide what direction you want to go in, and then also be able to follow up and ask us questions. After we go through the budget reductions, there's also a memo that's titled Fiscal Year 2018 Proposed Budget Additional Information. Our finance director Molly Talkington will go through that. We've tried to address the questions that we have heard directly from council members and the community in regards to questions on the fiscal year 18 budget. And then the third item is the 2017 levy and the 2018 collection of taxes in and for the corporate and municipal purposes of City DeKalb for fiscal year 2018. So this is based on the direction of what the council provided to us on Monday. So from Monday night till now Thursday evening, we were able to take that information from your direction on the property tax levy and then incorporate that and make modifications to the fiscal year 18 budget, including the 5% reduction. So that's kind of the background of where we're going from here. So let me just start. At city council discussion, at the city council meeting this past Monday, it was apparent that there was significant discussion regarding the state of the city's finances and the nature of the budget presentation. Based on the direction received from the council, senior management staff and I cleared our schedules over the last couple of days. We have worked intensively and collaboratively to directly and fully address all the expectations of the council. We have developed options for budget reductions to meet the goals of the council and specifically to outline a 5% reduction in expenditures in the general fund. As a city manager, I led the preparation of the analysis and the included content. Collectively, as the senior management team, we spent over 200 man-hours, might be 250, even higher, in order to meet the council's goal, the reductions, while incorporating the direction from Monday night on the property tax levy. We wanted you to have this information in advance of the November 27 city council meeting, so you have adequate time to review it and provide direction at that meeting if you so choose. Over the past few years, the city has developed a responsible fund balance and worked diligently to maintain it. At the same time, the city has worked to modernize its operations and to develop professional operational standards that meet the public and the council's expectations. Coupling operational excellence with the need to account for past underfunding of pension obligations poses some financial challenges. In order to work towards the budget policies that the city council has adopted has meant implementing increases in the property tax levy. The tentative levy that was proposed on Monday evening was based on the recommendations of the Finance Advisory Committee, or FAC for short, and based upon the city's budget policies. The clear message of council from Monday evening, however, was to look at the implications of a budget based upon no property tax increase. We heard you loud and clear. The tentative levy approved by the city council included only growth in the city's equalized assessed value, or EAV, and the truth in taxation notice will be published based upon that direction. The content of our presentation tonight is based upon that direction, to evaluate the impact on city services generated by holding the change in the tax levy to equal the county's projected percentage increase in EAV. Tonight's premise, tonight's presentation is premised upon two things. Number one, a property tax levy including only an increase necessary to capture the projected increase in EAV. Number two, a pension expenditure estimate of a 7.5% investment return rate with other non-property tax revenue covering $835,655 of pension costs. Based on the direction of council, the previously proposed general fund budget has been evaluated to include three items. Number one, a roughly $700,000 reduction in ongoing costs so as to reach a 25% fund balance. Number two, a proposed 2.5% overall reduction. And number three, a proposed 5.0% overall reduction. With the last option, a 5% overall reduction, the city's general fund balance would reach nearly 29.2% in fiscal year 18. While reaching a general fund balance of nearly 30% sounds beneficial, the council and FAC must recognize that implementing the level of reductions described in this presentation will represent a fundamental change in the city's operations. Over the past several years, the city has worked to modernize operations, introduce technology that can reduce efficiencies in the short and long term, and provide tools that meet public and council expectations. The city has worked to be staffed in a fashion that can support sustainable operations. Implementing the reductions of this magnitude will stop or even reverse many of those improvements. It's just a statement. Fundamentally, reductions of this scope will return many of the city's operations to a status quo process of struggling to meet basic operational needs to core services, for core services. Cuts in support departments such as information technology will carry over to impair the operations of frontline public safety and public works. The reductions described in this presentation outline many difficult decisions and have already prompted many difficult conversations with city staff members today, many of whom are personally and directly affected by these changes. The reductions also include items that have the potential to be controversial and poorly received by the public and certain groups, such as cuts in social services and municipal band funding. However, the presentation has been proposed on the basis of the expressed direction of the city council that nothing is off the table and that these specific cuts should be included for consideration. The budget that was originally proposed to the council represents a staff recommendation for meeting public needs and expectations and working towards the goal of the budget policies and strategic plan. The cuts included represent the earnest effort of staff to identify reductions that are possible and that affect immediate change in accordance with council direction. The impact of the cuts is described briefly to indicate the nature of each reduction. Overall, the cuts described in this presentation would result in the city reaching its lowest staffing level since fiscal year 2014 with the potential elimination of nine full-time positions and 11 part-time positions. Those reductions have been proposed without reducing sworn public safety personnel. With the city's current police and fire service demand, cuts in sworn personnel simply cannot be recommended. However, there are cuts proposed in the levels of service provided by public safety personnel, and the cuts in support services will directly impair the efficiency and effectiveness of the personnel remaining. The police and fire departments represent 65% of the general fund budget. Of those two departments, personnel costs are roughly 95% of their total expenditures. So you can imagine if we've not touched any of those personnel expenditures in police, this puts a disproportionate pressure on other city departments to reduce staffing. In other words, the cuts in other non-public safety departments are deeper than 5%. As these reductions have been prepared, our senior management staff and I have collaborated to meet the direction of the council. While it may sound simple to put first responders over support personnel and integral service departments, the police and fire chiefs have been among the most vocal in explaining the need for those internal services departments and how they support their departments. In short, the city's department heads and I wish to proceed or present a unified, responsive, and agile approach to the council's direction. If the council directs that a 5% cut be undertaken, reductions have been identified in accordance with that specification, eliminating nearly $2 million in city expenses with roughly 70% of those cuts being reoccurring annual expenditures. However, the city cannot implement reductions of that nature and expect to deliver the same level of professional complete services that are currently being delivered, nor can it hope to implement process improvements and efficiencies. With that introduction in mind, I'll now ask each department head to come to the podium to provide a concise overview of the impact on their department. We'll start with community development, and our attempt is to move rapidly through each department, and we'll leave it up to you whether you have particular questions of the department heads or if you just want us to proceed through the presentation and move forward. So with that, I'll introduce our community development director, Joel Charlton, and turn it over to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Anne Marie, members of the council and the Finance Advisory Commission and members of the community. Concise is tough in this environment, but I'll do my best. As all of you are aware, the role of the community development department is to protect and grow values in the community because it's only with that strong property value and assessed value that we're going to be able to pay for police and fire and public works and infrastructure projects. So, you know, while, I know we keep hearing that it might not be a core service, but it really is an important part of the community because only if we can grow that value and generate tax revenues will we have the ability to pay for these key services. Our department includes five main service functions, and I'll just go through them really quickly. It's economic development. We want to get them here, promote the community, and get them here. Approval process, so if we need to annex property or get them through the approval process. We have permitting and development, so plan review, inspections, new development, getting the projects in. Two other components of our department include crime-free housing, property maintenance, and code compliance. So in other words, once it's here, we need to take care of it, make sure it stays attractive and valuable for the community and doesn't fall into disrepair or become unsafe for the people who live in our community. And then also, we have a CDVG Social Service Administration program. And again, that program protects the roughly $400,000 in free money that we get from the federal government that supplements capital improvement projects in the community as well as provides a funding source for some of the city's neediest people in the community. Getting to the cuts that were proposed in the budget. City manager Anne Marie Gora indicated that cuts in departments not involving public safety hit deep. They hit particularly deep in my department. The proposed 5% cut requires a 30% cut out of community development. That's almost, that's over a half a million dollars, $550,000. Some of the hardest cuts to make involve some staffing changes. Proposed in the program is staffing changes to the crime-free housing and code compliance division, which forces the restructuring and redistribution of job responsibilities to other positions in the community. There's no way to sugarcoat this, folks. This results in the elimination of one full-time staff position. Also included in that request are reductions in the part-time inspector positions. We currently have five part-time positions budgeted. We're going to take that down to three, meaning that we will have fewer boots on the ground to respond to people's complaints about weeds and other things going on in the community and keeping our buildings safe. We had previously included in our proposal an increase from full-time to part-time to help some of the main positions in the department function better and more effectively. That has been removed from the budget. CDVG staffing and the building plan review and inspecting staffing changes remain as originally proposed. Further cuts in the department include a $20,000 reduction for a vehicle that was requested. Again, I know the story's been shared, but we have many instances where the worst of the vehicles in the community get pushed down to some of our code compliance inspectors, and that vehicle will not be available. Additional cuts include a reduction of $13,000 in the abatement program. So, for example, when we have poorly maintained properties or weeds, in the past, we've been able to send crews out or pay for the abatement of those code violations in the community. That will be cut, so those services will no longer be available, and the weeds will continue to grow. We've made cuts to all of our planning projects in the community. So the comp plan was proposed at a $45,000 initial investment over a two-year period. I think we've heard loud and clear that this community is not ready to embark on further planning projects in the community. These are very important in our ability to attract and send a clear message to the development community about what we want. And short of having those plans in place, it makes it very difficult for us to be competitively, competitive in that market when we're competing with other communities who have clear plans and are presenting them to those prospective developers. We've also removed the second phase, so the Antiglade and North Revitalization Plan project was split into two phases. The funding for this year is still in place. The funding for next year is proposed for elimination. That project would need to be completed without the assistance of a consultant. We've also proposed reduced budgets for HR Green. So I know I talked a little bit about how we use HR Green for our contractual building plan review and inspection services. We're going to pull that back, and if we, we'll try to do what we can in-house. But if we need additional services to provide to developers that are coming in the door and want that expedited service or other things, we won't be able to provide that to them. We're also proposing a 44% reduction in the proposal that we made for marketing materials. Again, this is for economic development purposes. One of the things we've heard from our partners at the state is that we need to do a little bit better job in promoting our community. And when we, when we went through the recent experience with Project New World, we had the opportunity to create a lot of meaningful information, and we will do what we can with a 44% cut in that budget. Social services, I know this is going to be an unpopular cut. It was proposed last year, and I think we went into our discussions in this past week hoping to stay away from that cut. But when you get so far down the list and there's nothing left to cut, we did propose it in two phases. I think initially, we thought we would comply with the council's prior direction to just cut out those, the funding that's typically provided to those programs that have not been responsive in their reporting. been responsive in their reporting requirements. So that is shown in your packets as the initial cut, which we had hoped to stay out with only $5,500, but at the end of the day, the remaining portion of that project needed to come out. Some other minor changes in training and other things that we could do, given reduced in staffing, were also made in our program. I think that concludes the cuts that are listed. I'd be happy to answer questions, or are we just going to move to the next department?
I defer to the council and FAC how they want to proceed.
Yeah, I'll ask Mike, and first of all, I'll ask the city council, would you prefer that the department heads go through the entire listing, and then we can address specific questions to specific arenas later? Or would you prefer that we open the questioning out to Joelle and Charlton and Community Development? Any thoughts on the council? Alderman Fanoukan?
Just that, since cuts in one department may affect another department, why don't we wait and listen to everybody, and then we can see how they work together?
Okay. Does there seem to be consensus from council that that's fine? Mike?
I think that makes a lot of sense because that way we assure that every department head gets the chance to go through their cuts on a level playing field before we begin to discuss them.
Let's do that, then.
All right. Next up-
Thank you, Joelle.
Next up, our Assistant City Manager Patty Happenstett, covering the manager's office.
Good evening, everybody. First item that would be eliminated out of the city manager's office budget is the IHSA funding for $12,500. That would be the elimination of the city's contribution towards the statewide competition at NIU. The marketing merchandise of $1,900, that's elimination of acquisition of some marketing merchandise utilized for recruitment, economic development. The city manager's office does certain events that are in addition to or aside from the events that Community Development does. For instance, Parent-Student Weekend, we will buy marketing materials and provide handouts and giveaways or city-branded things so that the thousands and thousands of parents that come to the city on that student weekend are provided that sort of information and feel welcome to the community. We will be eliminating that. Municipal band, with all items being put on the table, city council brought up the municipal band. So elimination of the city's support for the municipal band, again, as per council direction. The band has become an independent, non-for-profit corporation, and that elimination would be $60,250. $7,000 to replace broken and dysfunctional furniture that city staff are currently either sitting on or trying to balance on as they do their day-to-day work. So we will eliminate that and continue to march on. Elimination of non-bargaining unit increases. We had to stay in line with our collective bargaining agreements, which the city council approved. All collective bargaining agreements have a 2% compensation adjustment. We're going to eliminate that for the nonrepresented employees. The city previously expanded significant funds to conduct a pain compensation study and implement sustainable pay practices and to address the compression issues that were between supervisory, non-union staff and those subordinate staff. Well, we will go back to the days where there are compression issues and people do not want to apply for non-bargain unit positions, but that is a savings of $153,821. And I just want to clarify, we will honor our collective bargaining agreements, which the city council approved, and everyone else will receive their 2.5% increase. So we wouldn't, we're not presenting that we would in any way violate our agreements with our unions. The elimination of the NIU Masters in Public Administration Management interns. So the city would terminate the longstanding practice in Northern Illinois' MPA internship program and eliminate the staffing used for city projects, public outreach, awareness programs, for savings of $33,338. The NIU student leadership outreach that has been in practice now, and we've had two very successful events, for $5,000, we would eliminate the hospitality of those events, which are budgeted for two a year. And public awareness marketing for $2,000, and that would be the elimination of newspaper and radio advertisements used to market any special meetings or public information sessions to increase the city's transparency and encourage citizen engagement. We've heard time and time again from our community that not everybody looks at our website or has access to our website, so we use radio ads in order to get the word out. We will solely be relying then on, hopefully, that press releases are picked up by our media and communicating on the website and Facebook. That is it for the city manager's office, which you see the totals on the bottom of the sheet there on page 10. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is our Finance Director Molly Talkington to go over the reductions in the Finance Department.
Good evening. The Finance Department is somewhat of an internal service department because we help support the other departments, and we present here to show you kind of all the information that we have financially at the city. We also do a lot of external support through the water billing, refuse collection. Any people that walk into the city hall, the first place they look at is the Finance Department. We have two staff members right in the front. They're ready to greet. They're part-time, so one at each time during the day, and then they receive kind of backup from the rest of the department. So what we're looking at for the Finance Department to contribute in the 5% cut list is we would restructure the finance staff to eliminate a half of a position. And what that really means to the citizens and to you all is that it will take longer for finance staff to, you know, assist customers. If we're busy at the front counter, your phone call and a water billing question might go to voicemail, we might have to call you back. So there will be a longer turnaround time in the customer service, but we, of course, will still be at the front to try to help you, but it will impact the citizens as you come to the front desk in the customer service aspects of the Finance Department. That'll be a $40,000 reduction. Like the city manager's office, we also have a lot of old furniture that we were looking to possibly change out, and we will reduce that as well, and that's a $7,000 reduction. So the Finance Department has a $47,000 reduction.
Thank you. Next up is our Fire Chief Eric Hicks, overviewing the reductions to the Fire Department.
As far as the Fire Department's reductions, we are looking at the Commercial Building Inspection Program reduction for $35,500. That's going to result in the either reduction or elimination of the Commercial Building With that, there may be a reduction on our ISO rating. Also along with that is the Commercial Building Inspection Intern for $13,603. That person is instrumental, and he basically runs the Commercial Building Program. As you know, when that program was started, it was not sufficiently staffed, so we did employ an intern to take care of all the administrative work with that. So basically, with the elimination of that program and the elimination of the overtime for the 7G personnel, it's going to be very difficult to make that program move forward. Drug lock boxes, this is an IDPH requirement for $9,000, and these are to give us lock boxes in each ambulance to take care of our narcotic-type drugs. Fire inspector training for $35,850. This is for, to upgrade all our fire officers to the Fire Inspector I level, who will also run Commercial Building Program. Overtime for cultural competency training for $16,500. We have done some research on that. We believe we can do that on duty. We were planning to do that on the off-duty basis so they could get a better bang for their buck with the instructors, but we'll do, we'll bring the instructors in-house, and when we have a call, we'll just stop the training and move forward after they return from the call. As you know, we do special event standby in Northern Illinois University, District 428, at the Convocation Center in Husky Stadium. There's $54,000. This has been talked about for many years. It's kind of a revenue neutral somewhat. It does bring in some revenue, but there's also some, there's some hidden expenses that occasionally do come up. We have equipment and staffing that we have to take care of on that, so that's not a true $54,000 savings. Then $10,000 for training, and that is basically to maintain core competencies for our fire officers and our new hires. So that is what I have for Fire Department reductions.
Thank you, Eric.
Thank you. Next up, our Information Technology Director, Mark Thorson, for the Information Technology Department.
Good evening, everyone. I would like to just provide a very quick overview of what IT does for a city because I think it is either misunderstood or maybe not really well-communicated. So from an IT standpoint, we essentially provide data to all of our customers, and that includes internal staff, elected officials appointed, and also the community. We also facilitate collaboration, and we look at process improvements and see where we can help with those areas. That's a very, very high-level overview of what IT does. Our specific department is broken into two houses. We have one that is the technical services side, the folks that repair all of our devices. They also work all the way up to the network level and make sure that everything's functioning properly. They triage events as they come in. From a data services side, we do the city's mapping, and we also do the data collection and maintenance, and we also do integrated services. So we, where our initiatives are to facilitate communication between programs where we need to have that crossover. With that, I'd like to go through what has been proposed as directed. The first item is a software program called Achieve It. This is a product that the city's been using in order to track and assign tasks relative to the city's strategic plan. This also helped facilitate transparency to the public as well, making it easy for staffs to be able to update as process was completed and be able to communicate that out to the public. In lieu of that, what we're looking at is bringing this back to a manual process essentially and looking to track efforts and find other creative ways to do things as needed. From a, so, we also have a cell phone reduction based on reductions in staffing, where, because that falls under the IT budget, that falls under our purview. We're also proposing a copier reduction of $22,000. Essentially, we are looking at reducing the number of copiers that the city has to one per functional area, in some cases, one per building, depending on the situation. So that is one area. We're also looking at eliminating an IT technician position. This position was vacated, and we were in the process of filling this. Elimination is essentially, the elimination of this position essentially impacts all areas of the network. And to a degree, because public safety is our largest technology users, this will impact them as well. We won't be able to respond as quickly. Our service levels will start to adjust in order for us to be able to help triage as calls come in and be able to help where we can. The Enterprise Resource Planning Project, as was brought before the committee of the whole previously, we are looking to essentially delay the installation of that, which would help in a fiscal year 18 point of view. So the implementation would not start until fiscal year 18, where the money has already been budgeted out of capital funds, and look to FY '19 to be able to, for those costs to occur, should we continue down with that project. In the same manner, Office 365, which was brought before council earlier, we can, we can delay the implementation of that, which would then delay the renewal costs to fiscal year '19. So please understand that those cuts are one-time cuts for this year, and then they would essentially be picked up in the following year to continue the service. So we budget money every year to be able to facilitate replacement of technology and to attempt to replace as, in a more concise manner. What we're asking here is a reduction of 50%, which is $8,000 to those replacements, and we will essentially triage repairs as needed to continue service. We've also had a training reduction of $5,200, which will essentially cut down the level of training that staff is provided. We also are looking at a elimination of Reich Project Management. This was a software that was implemented this past, this current year as a subscription service in order to facilitate project management for the city level. It provided the ability to communicate and collaborate within the stakeholders of a project regardless of whether they were city employees or if they were outside personnel that were also working on projects with the city. So the reduction of this would, in essence, put us back to more of a manual process of project management and relying on other services that we can provide at the time, so. And that completes the list for IT.
Thank you. Next up, our Human Resources Director, Chris Randall, regarding the Human Resources Department reductions.
Okay, good evening. Just going to start by saying that the mission of the Human Resources Department is to provide support to all other departments of the city and to all employees. And we do that by recruiting, developing, and retaining talented workforce so the city can deliver the best service possible to the community. The proposed cuts for HR, and those are in no specific order. Cultural competency training, we are going to reduce the scope for the non-sworn, for the sworn personnel. In lieu of offering the cultural competency training via facilitators and professors from NIU, we are going to use online-based training or some other training so police and fire can do that during duty time, so that will not incur overtime to those departments as well. We are also looking to eliminate the NIU Grant Intern that we are receiving this year, which is a grant that we receive for three interns with NIU that provides for 50% of the cost of the interns. Recruitment reduction, we are going to reduce by $9,800 the recruitment based on reduction in staff in other departments. City staff training, we are going to be reducing by $10,000 and not provide workers' compensation supervisory training or customer service training for frontline employees. We are doing a holding on the staff, $27,593. Hold the HR generalist part-time in lieu of full-time. Tuition reimbursement, we're eliminating the total tuition reimbursement for all employees unless contractually obligated for $47,000, which is a benefit that all employees received in a good partnership with NIU. Wellness program, we are going to reduce by $5,200 in eliminating wellness designed to minimize long-term healthcare costs and related premium increases, and this includes flu shot clinics and certain well-being initiatives. While the items don't seem to be many items, the total reduction in HR, it's over $116,000, which equates to over 23% of the entire HR budget.
Thank you, Chris. Next up, our Chief of Police, Jean Lowry, regarding Police Department reductions.
Good evening. I've taken a little bit different approach. I've taken a little bit different approach, hope this doesn't goofy up too much. So, recently I came to a council meeting and proposed a 3-2-2 police staffing plan to really discuss the impact of increasing services and the level of resources available to reduce those. I'm hoping that's still fresh in your mind as we go to reflect on some of the information I'm going to give you now. And I have to say that the reductions in regard to the Police Department pale in comparison to my colleagues. So, in one way, I'm grateful, in the other way, I'm also saddened. But it has to be acknowledged that the reductions in all departments have a systemic impact, and I'll try and relate that to these points as I move forward. I'm not going to go over the items in the agenda memo, I think they're self-explanatory. I may touch on them briefly as they connect other things, but let me go through these topics one by one. The current vacancies we face and the increased demand for services, and the results of those four staffing analysis that we've talked about led us to give you the 3-2-2 plan for police officers as proposed in the FY18 budget. Most of the impact for us in the Police Department is in that FY18, so the proposed budget. So, we are receiving the least amount of cuts in the proposed FY18 budget, but those cuts in staffing that we had proposed do have an impact. However, when I reflect on other departments like Human Resources, the inability to fill vacant positions and the increasing demand for services really have an impact on our residents, which is really what this is all about. Those examples include longer response times to non-emergency calls, fewer officers on the street, at times only four officers and one supervisor, and an extremely heavy reliance on overtime to meet staffing needs and baseline services. And just as a reminder, from January 1st of this year to date, we've had 26 officers injured in the line of duty. Beginning in 2013, we began to adjust internally to, as it was apparent, we had an increasing level of service demand, and our resources were either going to stay the same or were going to continue to be behind. At no time during my career here have we been fully staffed for any lengthy period of time. Probably the longest was a turn between 2014 and 15. But, as a result of seeing that ahead of time, we began to make some corrections. In November of last year, a deputy chief retired. I did not fill that position because I wanted to keep that extra set of boots on the ground. It has an impact, certainly from a leadership and succession planning perspective. We currently have a detective position vacant. I'm not filling that because I have to keep the boots on the ground and patrol to respond to calls. We all know what we've been facing recently in regard to violent crime. That'll increase to two detectives in a couple of weeks, that will be positions that would be vacant. Currently, our patrol force is 10% lower, from an operational perspective. So, we continue to leverage our other options, like our copolicing agreement with NIUPD and things of that nature. But clearly, staffing and budget challenges diminish our ability to provide certain things at a level in which our communities become accustomed to. And we're evolving back to a more reactive versus proactive posture based on those demands. So in order to meet baseline services, at the rate we're going, we have to evaluate the calls for service and see what calls we can eliminate a police response to. So, what that means to me, and among a number of disciplines within the Police Department, is simply this, that community outreach programming, how we respond to calls, and how we posture ourselves to deal with the challenges we face is going to change, and we have to be honest with the community about that. Let me talk briefly about the impact of technology. Since 2012, the Police Department has implemented a variety of technology that has enabled us to do things smarter and more effectively. That was a call that I not only held inherent to my heart, but the council also held it as well. So, how does technology impact the police? From the time we receive a call for help from anybody in this community, to the time the officer arrives, and everything that happens in between and thereafter is supported by technology. CAD, computer rated dispatch, 911, field-based reporting, crime analysis, resource deployment, triaging calls, and getting resources to the scene and supporting them throughout and keeping them safe while on scene, all has a technology root. The decreasing level of IT services has a direct impact on our department, but it has an indirect and direct impact on our citizens. In order to expand our service delivery in the Communication Center to accommodate the public safety answering point consolidation on a contractual basis, excuse me, in the future, based on the recent regulations that have been imposed upon us to reduce the amount of 911 centers in the state of Illinois, we had implemented a plan. As a part of the proposed budget, that plan's been cut out, so we'll be doing that on our own. More importantly, the impact of technology and its ability to either enhance or limit our potential revenue source through contract dispatching. If we don't have the ability to have a 24/7 IT-based support system, we're not going to be able to even consider offering a service to another community or to another agency, which could be a potential revenue source and could help with the interoperability of communications and dispatching countywide. Last, I want to talk to you a little bit about some budget reduction measures and kind of the reality approach, and I'm sorry I didn't really focus on a lot of numbers. I know they're in your agenda memo, but I'm going to talk to you a little bit from the heart, and I know you get scared every time you hear me say that. The transitioning of the crossing guard program to the school district has helped eliminate a tremendous burden on the Police Department, for that I'm grateful. The proposed budget's going to decrease that funding and not get the school district to the year, the year-end this year. It really places them in an uncomfortable and really unforeseen circumstance. From a operational point of view, it also places our children in jeopardy as well. But, the next point I want to talk about, again, real briefly, is our reliance on overtime. And again, budget reduction measures in reality. When I look at how many hours our police officers work, how many workman's compensation cases we have, how many things we look at and attempt to reduce this or that by only looking at the world through the monetary component or the numbers associated with the budget, it becomes a little bit frightening. The actual impact on our officers related to burnout, fatigue, stress, injuries, and officers disengaging from the community they serve is significant when all we do is work them, when all we do is rely on them to work overtime day upon day. The short-term savings in being fiscally responsible in certain areas does come at a long-term cost. And I think we can all make the assumption, without me going into too much of a dissertation here, about the impact of attrition, loss of time due to sickness, illness, or other related matters and the like. The third comment I'd make in regard to budget reduction measures in reality is, it's important to acknowledge that this Police Department, long before I got here, has been doing more with less for so long that it's become expected. And I don't anticipate that changing. Yet, public safety continues to be a reoccurring theme in our community because our residents fear the rise in crime. We keep telling our residents the public safety is a priority even when it's not. The budget for another consecutive year not only will impact our officers and operations in general, it will impact our residents, and it is that consecutive year of additional budget cuts. In closing, I'd say this, it is clear that sound fiscal management is important to you as our electeds. It certainly is the right thing to do. Yet, for not only the police, but for our counterparts providing a service that support everything, like in the military, in the Army, everything supported the infantry, for those who were in the 3rd Infantry Division. But, that fiscal management, it is the right thing to do. But if you limit your decision-making to the percent of fund balance to address future budget challenges alone, you will have an early victory. However, the long-term cost on the road, you'll be concerned about for the rest of your lives. Thank you.
Next up is our Public Works Director, Tim Holdeman, to review the reductions in the Public Works Department.
Thank you, City Manager. The Public Works begins on page 20. At the top of the page, you see the staffing for fiscal year 17 and the requested staffing for fiscal year 18. In 17 to 18, we went from 36 to 38 full-time. That warrants some explanation. One of those additions is a DSAT Transit Grant Specialist, which would be 100% funded through grants. The other position would be the addition of a Public Works Foreman as a result of consolidation and reorganization, as a result of losing one of our superintendents earlier this year. And that reorganization would result in a cost savings of $37,000. So although this is a plus-two in number, in terms of cost, it's minus $37,000. As we've looked through the services for the Public Works Department, we've tried not to get into our core services. We begin by looking at the airport and the airport line service reduction. We currently are open 10 hours a day at the airport. This item would reduce that to eight hours a day for a cost savings of $19,000. Our Central Business District has decorations, as you know, holiday lights and hanging baskets. Those would be eliminated with this proposal, and we'd go back to the garlands around the light poles with only estate planners. That would be a potential $12,000 savings. Community center operations costs, we currently pay for utilities for our community center operations, and eliminating that and causing providers to pay for that cost would result in an estimated cost savings of $8,000. We currently use engineering interns to do some of the preparation work on our engineering services. Eliminating one of two would result in a savings of $11,000. We also have a number of engineering studies that we go through throughout the year that may be unexpected, including environmental studies, looking at bridges and culverts, specialty studies in which staff are not trained or expert, or which would cause a burden in terms of project scheduling. Reducing those would have a potential savings of $30,000. The engineering laboratory that we've been using for several years to do our concrete core testing can be eliminated. The result of savings there would be $5,000. We have contract services for our snow removal, for our arterial sidewalks. Whenever there's a snow greater than two inches, the contractor comes out and removes those, removes that snow along Sycamore Road, 1st Street, 4th Street, and 38. That same contractor also responds to the Central Business District in the same manner, doing the sidewalks, removing snow from the sidewalks at a greater than two inches snow. Eliminating those two would be $75,000, $65,000. I would note here that that would create a significant burden on our current staffing by not having that contractor available. We currently have 18 people assigned out of 26 to our snow routes. That leaves us eight to do everything else, including running the water system and the airport. And so, contractors are very important. I would ask City Council to have a second thought before they reduce that, those amounts. Now, I'll talk about this consolidation and restructuring that we looked at. It was a net $37,000 in savings that we had proposed. However, if we eliminate that position, we can realize another $49,000. And, we have a superintendent that will be retiring in January, and if we do not fill that position, or fill that internally and not replace the person that would move up to that position, that could potentially result in a savings of $34,000. I will say that our current management structure is highly defective. We have 30 employees reporting to three superintendents with no intermediate foreman or no hierarchy for career path or succession planning. We have a workforce that over the next five years, probably 25 to 30% will be retiring. We need to have succession planning, we need to have a career path to help people move out of the labor force and into management, so we can sustain that institutional knowledge that we heavily depend upon to support our community and to give service to our community. Traffic plan elimination, these are traffic plans that are unscheduled, but through the course of the year and talking to developers and such, it becomes necessary to do. We would eliminate those and create that burden, put that burden back on the developer. Tree trimming and replacement reduction, we're looking at a potential savings there of $35,000. Again, without that contractor available to take storm damage, the burden of storm damage or large trees that require an excessive amount of our staff to address, that takes away from all the regular tree trimming that our forestry group would be doing, and therefore, what we currently consider about a seven or eight-year cycle, that trees would be trimmed in neighborhoods every seven or eight years would probably escalate to 12 to 15 years. And lastly, elimination of the water cooler service, and we certainly hope that one will be passed. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. Just in summary, then, a couple other items. If you look at page 23, a couple assumption changes that were made as part of the presentation for this evening. Number one, as we reviewed it in staff, we included the FEMA grant for the fire radios. You may recall that there's $300,000 in radios that were recommended initially in the budget. $200,000 was going to first generation, I'm sorry, $200,000 was going to second, first generation, first generation radios for the Fire Department. $100,000 was going to second-generation radios for the Police Department. So we will be applying for FEMA grant funding. If we didn't get that funding, we would come back to you at that point in time. So we made an assumption change there. Another item we have listed here is to sell the resident officer house, $130,000. This would eliminate the Pleasant Street Neighborhood Resident Officer Program and related community outreach. As such, right now, we don't have an officer that's living in that building and don't see anybody right now in the foreseeable future. I think Chief Lowry can address that one better than I can, if you have any questions on that. We also included capital fund reductions. We eliminated the dump truck at $144,000. This was originally to replace an existing unsafe vehicle. The ERP reduction, Enterprise Resource Program reduction, or Enterprise Resource Planning Software based on staff renegotiation of scope of project and related costs. Fire command vehicle, $40,000 eliminated. Fire station security, $60,000 eliminated. This would have been for Fire Station 1. Police Department squad, you may recall, in the original draft budget, there were three squad cars. We are now budgeting them at $55,000, and that's all-inclusive, the base vehicle and all the equipment to upload and add to the vehicle. So, we are, what's listed tonight, then, is eliminating one of those vehicles. Two other vehicles would be purchased out of the asset forfeiture fund, as has been done previously, but we can make no commitments going forward that funds will be in that fund to be able to pay for vehicles. I think what you've seen in staff's overall presentation this evening is, this was, first of all, a very difficult process. This was not easy coming to these points, that's just a matter of fact. We, as staff, as the senior management staff, focused on the core services supporting police and fire, and we analyzed a host of different possibilities. So, we will be more than happy to answer any questions of why did we eliminate one item and not another. But we're trying, we're trying to maintain those core services and know that there's this integration of various departments and how one change can impact another department. With that, I just want to point out that was provided to you tonight, and especially for those in the audience, all this information should be online, is a multi-year staffing summary. And just to kind of give you an overview as to what's in here, when you look, this starts with fiscal year '07. We have it broken down between full-time positions, part-time positions, and then FTEs or full-time equivalents. This information has been reviewed and analyzed. This information has been reviewed and analyzed by our Human Resources Department, so this is based on the actual records that they have in HR. You may find some other documents, I think I've said this publicly before, such as in our audit. You may see more employees that were represented there. At some point in time in our audit, I believe the elected officials were represented in there. Those have been pulled out subsequently. So this is just staff right here. As you go across from fiscal year '07 to fiscal year '18, in yellow are the boxes that are highlighted, where there's a change, whether it's up or down, in relation to full-time, part-time, or FTEs. The wording underneath the spreadsheet is, you'll see an outline, we wanted to break down very specific positions that are grant-funded. So in 18, fiscal year 18, we have the Mental Health Coordinator, that I know the City Council's very aware of. We also have this Transit System Consolidation Coordinator that Director Holdeman briefly talked about. This is the consolidation of NIU Husky Bus Line with TransVAC. And so Director Holdeman has been working with NIU and DSATs as far as what the next steps to make that happen, and this is part of it. Fiscal year 18 is also Transit Grants Administrator. Those are all funded through these federal funds, the program. We also pointed out the DSAT staff that you'll see from fiscal year 5 to fiscal year 17. And when comparing the fiscal year 18 totals to previous years, please keep in mind, there are four additional full-time equivalent positions that are related to DSATs or transit. And why is that important? Because when you look at overall where we're going on staff, I think you need to know when those new positions are put in. And also, if you're going to compare apples to apples to previous years, you kind of pull those out of the equation in those years that those have been added. So I know Council and the community likes to look at, well, where have we gone from one point to the next in staff? So I wanted to point out that item. We are also still collecting the information. Alderman Jacobson has requested an outsourcing. We had presented information last year, but we're reviewing that information, so we are still working on that, and we'll get that to you when we are finished with that. Lastly, I would like to, in this part of the presentation, turn it over to our Finance Director, Molly Talkington, to now go over the revised five-year financial forecast. She ran three different scenarios that she wants to review with you and what the impact would be over five years to the general fund with these changes. Thank you.
Thank you. The very first page, it was kind of the handout you got early on. So I apologize for small print, but there's a lot of information on these sheets. So on the top in the red, it tells you kind of which scenario we're looking at. So we start with the expenditure reduction to that 5% level. And I'm not going to go line by line through the financial forecast, but I want to explain what has changed on here. We made the revisions to include the purchase of the property in the current fiscal year, the $250,000. I made the revisions to the income tax that we talked about as well, but that also affects the future years because we're starting in the lower income tax, and so the increase has changed for that. And the multi-year staffing plan for the police department includes the initial three, but the next two, and then two, are not included in this forecast any longer. The very last page is a more detailed sheet. I changed assumptions, looking more detailed line by line, and it says assumptions on the very top of it. So when you start to look at this, you can see I singled out what sales tax growth was, is in each year, and that, these assumptions apply to all three scenarios. The thing that changes between the first scenario to the last scenario is how many of the expenditure reductions are included. So the very first scenario, the expenditure reductions are to 5%, which brings you to that bottom-line number if we're looking at where we're at to the fund balance, to the 29.2% or $10.6 million. If you go to the next scenario to reach with the 2.5% reduction, so about $967,000 was reduced, and you go to that bottom-line fund balance target, it brings you to 25.69% or $9.5 million. And this is all in FY '18 that I'm pointing out. And then the last scenario is just to reach the 25% fund balance in '18, and that brings you to $9.3 million in fund balance. And then the very last sheet is where those assumption changes were made, and you can see some of the thought process, or what information I included as notes for those assumption changes.
And I would also ask at this point, just as we're going through the reductions, if Director Talkington can give a brief overview of the additional budget information, this is a separate memo. This is information that's been requested by council, committee, community. These are any questions that have been asked of us over the last couple of weeks in relation to the budget. And with that, I would ask Director Talkington to review those as well.
Sure. So the two points on this additional budget information that I'll cover first is, one, we had a question about the local motor fuel tax and what an increase would be in that revenue. So a one cent per gallon increase is about $180,000 increase in revenue, and this revenue is used specifically for roads and streets. So it has a nexus to what you're looking to do if you want to apply this to street funding. Our current rate is, we have a two cent per gallon for the Capital Projects Fund, but then we have an additional 1.5 cent per gallon for the airport fund. If you go to the next page, the, there was a question in terms of the all-fund balance. So when we looked at the proposed budget, we tend to focus just on the general fund or we focus on capital funds. We pull out funds on their own. But when you look at the total for all revenues and all expenditures, there was a question on how come the total for all expenditures exceeded the total for revenues? And in most cases, that is used as a kind of pay-as-you-go model for financing, where you save up and then you pay in the year that you actually purchased the item, right? What we would do with vehicles, if you purchase one, then you'd save for five years. However, the main increase on here, so if you look at something like the capital fund, that's usually what's happening in that fund. However, the main difference in your funds in this year is the TIF District Number 1. So again, it's, there's, it's mainly for private property rehabilitation, those redevelopment projects that we want to target in that central area business district. And so we've put these improvements into the budget to try to bring the development and spur development within the downtown and continue on the momentum that we have. So in some of these cases, the funding that's in here is for potential developments. So we don't know exactly that we're going to use the full funding. So that would be the $350,000 in here. You heard at the last council meeting that, you know, the Egyptian Theater receives $100,000 from the city for projects within that building. That's included in here. But what we did not do in this year's budget is we did not use funding from TIF 2. So what happens in, and this is a part of TIF law for the state, is if two TIFs are touching and the improvements in one TIF benefit the other TIF, there's an ability to use funding from the one TIF to pay for some of the benefit that they'll receive from the other TIF. What we did not include in this year's budget is a transfer of funding based on what we think are potential developments. What we did is we left TIF 1 with higher expenditures than the revenues, with taking this year to see what actual developments would occur in TIF 1, and then we would look next year at what we would, see what were the benefits that benefit TIF 2 that would apply and could be used in TIF 1. We didn't want to do that preemptively because these are potential developments, and we wanted to make sure that nexus was there, that the development would benefit both TIFs. The additional information is, there was a question about the changes from the '17 budget to the '18 budget for human resources, information technology, police and fire departments. It is all listed on this memo, and I, you've heard a lot of it now during the 5% cut, and some of these have changed based on that 5% cut. So if there's specific questions, we can go over them, but otherwise, because you did just hear detailed information on each of these budgets, I wasn't going to go into this for you tonight.
And Mayor, that concludes our presentation in regards to budget reductions. The only other thing after, from staff's perspective, after any questions that the council or the committee may have, is I know Director Talkington also has a presentation on the property tax levy based on the direction from Monday's night, night's meeting, but at this point, we'd love to answer any questions you may have on the budget reductions.
Okay. With the concurrence of Mike Peddell and the Finance Advisory Committee, we'll open it up to any questions, comments regarding the presentations from our department heads and specifically to Molly on her report on the sales tax, excuse me, on the property tax. Bill.
Thank you. In the memo itself, not in the numbers presented, it says a memo based on a property tax levy including the increase as to capture the projected increase, but then a pension expect ure estimate of 7.5 investment rate. I thought we decided the other night we were going to use 7.0.
The vote that I heard on the property tax levy was to change the property tax for the EAV growth, and I reduced the interest rate return to 7.5% because at that level, the general fund is picking up $835,000 of your pension obligations with the majority of it police and fire, but the $72,000 you had in IRF was eliminated. If we were going to stay at that higher level, the amount the general fund would have to pick up was almost $1.2 million. So you're, you're increasing the amount, actually, I think it was more than that, but it would increase the amount the general fund would have to absorb with other revenue sources.
Well, and I think we understood that when we were talking about the, you know...
I'll get the mic.
I'm sorry, that's right. My fault. I'm sorry, Lynn. Thank you. No, no, that's okay. Anyway, I thought that we were going to, from my, my understanding of our conversation the other night, is we were going to keep that at 7.0, and with us understanding that as we talked about the property tax levy and knowing that it meant we would have to pick up more of the pension costs out of the general fund. But with the number you, so the assumptions you made in this memo are all based on the 7.5 instead of the 7.0 that we talked about the other night.
Correct. But I did not, it could be my mistake, I did not hear that the investment rate, what the direction was to keep that the same. I did not hear that direction.
Okay, and as I understand it, that that was the FAC's recommendation to go to 7. And unless somebody else from council would like to correct me, I thought that was the understanding we had the other night, that it was going to 7% also.
Yeah. Kate, I'll leave it there.
And I was also going to ask a question about that because I too thought that we were taking a look at the 7%.
Right. I think that it is absolutely essential, no matter what you do, you know, to at least be realistic with respect to the level of funding, what is the 100% level of funding? And we've already had the professional opinion of the actuaries, which is that 7.5 is way, way, way too high. So even if you aren't, even if you aren't going to fund it, you still need to know what the difference is between the normal cost of pension and fully funding the pension. And 7% is still relatively aggressive. I mean, the state of Illinois for state employees is using 6.5 now. So, and they're, they have a very good investment return. So as painful as it is in terms of cuts and things, you know, basing it off the 7% I think is much more defensible.
Yeah, Tom.
And I'm not sure the order that you're going to proceed, but I understood there's going to be a pension discussion to come. And the item on the table to start with was largely these cuts and why we have the staff here, and everything's fresh in our mind, the questions we had regarding that. I have a couple regarding that. Just from an overview standpoint, Molly. Going through these revised options on the five-year projections with the assumptions on the last page. If I understood a couple things, just to clarify, the FOP, the police increase of three bodies is included or not included in your 5% reduction scenario?
So in the 5% reduction scenario, the three police officers are not funded in FY '18. So they are not included in 5% of cuts in FY '18.
Okay. So those expenses aren't in there either?
Beginning FY '19, there are three officers added to the police department.
In '19, okay.
But '20 did not add two, and '21 does not add another two.
Okay. So there's three officers in the whole program additional through the, through the five-year forecast.
Correct.
Okay. So thank you for that. The second thing is the revenue piece associated with the sales tax increase that was in the original budget. A portion of the 1% sales tax was included in the budget as far as revenue for operations associated largely with the police, but there were some increment. So if we, just again, to get the assumptions straight, we're showing sales tax revenue increases that were in the original projection, $400,000 in year 1, and it goes to $1.2 million by year 5.
Correct.
Correct. So the three officers are costing us $300,000 to $400,000 a year.
Almost $600,000.
In year 1, because you're funding the 25, but you don't have to fund that every year going forward because you put it in the bank and it's there. So just as, as the council understands this and debates the merits of all the reductions, as this walks forward, the $1.2 million incremental revenue is in this number to help fund operations to the extent that it exceeds something that the three officers might run to. I'm just trying to get the numbers so that we understand what we're talking about.
Right.
That's correct?
The 1%, the 1% sales tax is not in this budget.
The three tenths?
Correct.
No, the 1% sales tax has remained. It's not part of the expenditure reductions. That was part of the proposed budget.
I thought that the council rejected the 1% sales tax increase.
There was no...
No, no. Yeah. And that's why, I guess that's really the nature of my comments. So that as we understand the baseline here that's now projected, we're including the point of the 1%, operations is getting 0.30%, or 30% of that 1%, which was always part of the original budget.
But that, that's not what the FAC pays.
I understand that. I'm just saying what's in, I'm just trying to understand. So when we say we're at 10% or 29% or whatever we say we're at, that these numbers include operating revenues coming out of a sales tax increase. That is a component of these numbers that is part of the operation results that you're getting. So when you talk about the fund balance, you are getting an assist from the assumption that that sales tax number is in here, to the rate of 0.3%, right? Okay. So that's all I, that's all I wanted to get to, is that we understood what we're talking about. And then the second part, and I guess this question, you asked if we had specific questions on the list, and this question is really for the chief. If I understood the nature...
Which chief? Chief Lowry?
Yes. If I understood the nature of the comments regarding, you're not necessarily filling a detective spot or a deputy chief, and in lieu of that, are you adding a position of boots on the ground, or how's that working?
So we have an authorized amount in accordance with the ordinance, and because we have these vacancies and have been unable to fill them, I have to ensure that the first level of response is to that of the, supporting the patrol division and the response in the street. Based on our ability to fill those slots between now and however many months, that those would eventually be filled back to the authorized level.
Okay. So it's not your intent that you would permanently add to your first-line officers via that mechanism?
With, correct. Within the structure we have right now, it's a temporary solution.
Okay. It's just because you're not fully staffed.
Correct.
Or you got people hurt. Okay. Thank you.
David, did you have a comment?
I may have missed it only because I had to run to the restroom. I appreciate the question in the 1% question. For the... For this analysis that was presented to us tonight, what property tax assumption is this one under? What increase?
This is the council EAV to tie the property tax to increase 105.2% from the prior year with the intent of keeping a homeowner's property tax bill the same.
Be precise. The increase is 5.2%.
Right, not 105. Oh, I'm sorry.
105.2% last year's rate. Exactly. Don't want anybody to have a heart attack.
But that was the direction of the council on Monday night. We took no recommend, we didn't even discuss the sales tax, did we?
No.
In great light, yeah. Alderman Noriko?
I have a question for Public Works. We had at least generally discussed eliminating leaf pickup, and I know there was discussion that it wouldn't necess, just because you eliminate leaf pickup, you don't gain $100,000. But I thought that there would be some cost benefit, so frankly, I was a little surprised to see that that wasn't on here.
There will be no cost benefit.
Oh, there's, okay.
Yeah. We have, as I mentioned, 18 is kind of our minimum manning for snow and ice, and we have 26 available. And so we have eight remaining to run the airport in the water and to service the fleet that's out on the road. So we can't afford really to cut any of our labor. And so, and in addition, because our streets need additional patching and crack filling, we would redirect the labor force that's being used for leaf collection to do patching and crack sealing in the fall season prior to the first freezing and the beginning of pothole season. That's a great opportunity for us to seal up those cracks before the freeze thaw begins.
So, so you're basically still keeping the leaf service because, but I thought we had discussion that if you eliminated that, that staff could be used for the potholes and the storm water maintenance.
Yes, that's correct. And so there would, there would not be any net reduction or increase in the number of staff.
Okay.
Therefore...
Okay, so it doesn't appear on this list?
That's correct.
Okay, I get it. Thank you.
So Alderman Noriko, if the council directs, we can make that, that change and redirect resources. It just doesn't have a net impact on the general fund, but based on the discussion from the council, if you want us to do that, we can easily do that.
Okay.
Yeah, Tom?
Again, just a point of clarification as the debate begins. Molly, just a question. If we look at the 18 property tax revenue on your five-year projection?
Correct.
Where do you point, where is this?
First page.
So for fiscal year 18, the total property tax projection includes a 5.2% increase from the prior year in total revenue?
Correct.
Correct.
In the levies?
Yes.
This is reflecting that 5.2 growth without affecting a homeowner's bill?
Yes, I understand that. So the revenue, in theory, would go up 5.2%.
Yes.
Over the prior year.
Correct.
Not, it depends, okay, so, we didn't get to the property tax levy explanation, but I think this is very important for us to understand. So let me explain how the tax levy truth and taxation works. So what I heard from council was that we were going to post the truth and taxation for 5.2% growth from the levy last year. So how the truth and taxation works is the levy of last year includes what you've extended and abated. So the discussion of how the debt service payments come in here plays a little bit in how the calculations work for what your revenue turns into on the tax levy.
And my question is, it looks like it goes down here. That's my question.
Correct. So this is, this is why I'm trying to explain how this works. So when you set the levy last year, the total amount with it extended, including the debt before you abated it, was a little over $12 million. So that is what I used as what we increased 5.2% to list your truth and taxation notice, okay? However, you added this statement numerous times that you do not want a homeowner's bill to be increased. What that means in reality is this is a decrease in the property tax that comes to the city because the levies that support city operations and pensions, woo! See, we clearly need a new chair. Okay, this is fair.
New chair for you. New chair for you.
So what happens is, is when I looked to what you wanted to do for a homeowner, I look at the levies that would affect what you would keep on their bill, right? So now, the debt service last year with, before we abated, was over $4 million. This year, but, so then you abate it, so it goes down to a little over $400,000 because the amount of the debt we leave is related to the library, right? But that total amount where it's over $4 million is included where we're calculating what 5.2% increase is when we're posting the truth and taxation levy. That really is what the increase you will see in the truth and taxation. That's, that is what will stand out to you when you see that notice, right? But in all reality, when we come to you at the tax levy, we're focusing on corporate and the pensions. You also have your special service areas, and then the library's levies in there as well. But the ones that I know matter to this group and trying to get it so it won't increase on the homeowner is that corporate levy that we levy a portion for, but in reality, it pays for place and fire pension. You know, we have the IMRF levies, the other pension levies, but those have been reduced. So when we go and look at what you levied for those portions only, and we get rid of the debt service portion of this levy, the increase at 5.2 ends up being a decrease overall because you're not, sorry, because we're not including that debt service portion of the levy. And this is very complicated. I completely understand if you're looking at me kind of funny, but I don't think that tax levy understanding is, it's not something you will ever learn overnight. But it essentially results into that the growth you will see in just the levies that are related to the part that will end up on a homeowner's bill are not growing at that 5%, 5.2% of the overall levy. Because if we use some of that portion of the levy from what you would have used for debt service, it would increase the amount the homeowner would see on their bill, or potentially increase depending, you know, if they haven't done major additions to their home or if they weren't reassessed, all those kind of caveats I put on there.
That makes absolutely no sense, Molly. I mean, I don't think that, I don't think that, from what I've been told, I don't think the council's intention was to cut the levy.
No.
I mean, you know, this is a very simple calculation, okay, as to where you need to end up at the end. I understand truth and taxation. You can put a $15 million number out there just to be safe, okay? Fine. You know, the truth and taxation is truth and taxation, that you have the legal right to levy up to that. But, you know, at bare minimum, you got to take the levy for the corporate, the IMRF, the police pension and the fire pension, which was the 5.565 million dollars last year, and apply 5.2% to that.
That's right.
That I think was...
That's how the motion was stated.
And then, being the maker of the motion.
Right.
It was not.
Yeah.
It was not.
Can I, can I just interject? When we had this discussion the other night, my recommendation to you was to delay this to tonight because I was concerned of not having the numbers in front of you with making the change. So we will, we can make whatever change you direct, but this was the concern of trying to make that motion on the fly and not having the analysis in front of us. So when we looked at this and we reviewed this, we looked at this internally as staff as to what was the intent provided by the council, looked at the literal interpretation with our city attorney as to what legally do we need to do to comply with the direction that you provided, and based on what we believe was the motion is what is provided here tonight. If it is not in keeping with what you had wanted, let us know, and then Director Tockington will outline what steps we need to do to take to revise it.
You know, it is a subtle computation, just if you take last year's, excuse me.
If you take last year's levy amount and multiply it an additional 5.2%, you come up with $289,400. I mean, that was a very simple calculation to do, and that's how much the amount of the total property taxes should have gone up. That was the intent of the motion the other night, not to cut it.
Well, and I think that the intention was not to include the, the library part of that because you don't have control over the library's levy as much as you would like to. You don't have control over the library's levy. So when, when people talk about what, what the city needs to do with, with the property tax levy, it's the items that the city council itself controls. And the, the bottom line is, for years and years and years, the, the city has not used any property tax funds for debt from any of the, the corporate levy, which we didn't have until a few years ago, and that's a strategic thing, or from the pensions, which you can't move the money out of. So, you know, I think that as conservative as, as the council has been, you've at least got to, to capture the 5.2%. And unless you increase the levy, you're not going to capture that 5.2%. And if, okay, and we don't need to have a discussion about this, but if, if they were to freeze, then your base becomes something that is lower than what you intended.
Yeah, Tom?
My, I guess my, my original point to the, this whole discussion was to try to get the impact on this five-year projection because I think the council and FAC has been pretty strong about the 25% number in fund balance. And there's good rationale for that, but this schedule, if, if I were to understand where that number might end up, instead of 5.1 million in year one, that number could be 5.8 million in year one, adding 700,000 to the gross revenue if we truly get 5.2% real growth in the actual levy dollars. So it's substantial to the discussion. That, along with the 0.3% sales tax revenue, both very substantial to the bottom line discussion of how you get to where you want to be. So that, that was my point of asking it to make sure we're talking about what we want to be talking about.
And in rough terms, see if you and I are thinking the same way. In rough terms, the subsidy that you were looking at from the general fund is pretty close to that 700 or 800,000 dollars that, that would occur in, in the property tax if you applied it to the 5.5%.
Right, so...
Of course, that's assuming the 7.5% return too, so.
Well, okay, so while I had done some calculations where I feel the abatements play into this, when you look at the truth and taxation notice that will be on Saturday, essentially that is setting your cap unless you want to go back out for truth and taxation. And all, in that notice, the, I'm trying to see what the difference would be. It is higher than what is listed when I only look at specific levies. So you have an additional $2.7 million you can apply within these levies, and you would not be in violation of what will be posted in the truth and taxation notice. So there is some room in how we can discuss the interpretation of what the 5.2% meant and how we apply it, so we can go back and do that differently. Realizing the cap then allows you some room in 2 point million, or 2.7 million dollars there. If we're changing the pension assumptions back down to the 7.0 investment rate, that would be an additional $586,000 that we would need to capture. So in reality, if you wanted to do the pension funds at the 7.0 and capture it through the property tax levy, which would be under the truth and taxation cap, it would be an additional $1.4 million that would be added into that specific revenue that committee member Trisinski pointed out. So there is some room between what we are posting in truth and taxation and for us to talk more specifically about what you truly intended with the 5.2% increase and how that is to be applied and what interest rate, or investment rate you wanted for the pension.
And in that two-pronged answer, that would accomplish what we were wanting to do, or what we stated at the council meeting on Monday night. Would it not? Alderman Jacobs?
Again, I think that a lot of the confusion comes in between the rate and the levy for dollars. And I know we jump back and forth through that. Again, the intent was effectively to leave the rate the same at 100% of last year's. And obviously, knowing that we had a 5.2% rate of growth, if that rate is frozen at that amount, that growth will be captured. So provided we leave that rate the same and freeze that rate, growth will be captured every year as the EAV continues to change.
But if you, if you do that, Dave, and, you know, I'm arguing against myself a little bit here, but, but I believe that the interests of objectivity and the public knowing exactly what this means is, is very, very important. If you do what you said, there's one factor that you're not considering, and that's the fact that the EAV growth is not yet factoring in the multiplier, I don't think. And so there's, there's a multiplier that's going to go in there where everybody's EAV is going to go up. So even if you leave the rate constant through, and I understand how you would do that, you know, 5.2%, it should leave the rate constant. But if you leave the rate constant, what the effect will be is not what you're seeking. I mean, I think it's good, but what, what you're seeking is to keep those bills on average equal. But they'll actually go up for the city's share somewhere probably in the 2% to 2.5% range, maybe even a little bit higher because you're dropping, it's a three-year moving average. Last year was a, last year was a reassessment year, and the, the market has improved a little bit, so you're going to drop off a lower year and add a higher year. So I think everybody can expect that their EAV is going to go up. So, I think everybody can expect that their EAV is going to go up a bit. And that will probably, it won't be a large amount, probably, but they will see some increase in the city's extension of their property taxes.
There appears to be some consensus that we have a general understanding on the sales, excuse me, on the property tax issue. Having said that, we have two component pieces here of the discussion going forward that I'd like some input on. One is that we have the 5% reduction cuts that were proposed by our department heads tonight, and I feel we probably want to have some discussion there. The other thing is a question of mine, and that is, I think we need to take the recommendations of the Finance Advisory Committee that you folks threw our way and at least have some discussion if any of our council members have questions. My final point is, in looking at the FY 2018 budget, it may be a simplistic question, but sometimes I like simplistic questions and simplistic answers. Are the majority of FAC recommendations incorporated in the budget?
I would say the majority, yes.
Okay.
Not all.
Yeah, I think you had asked that I go through the recommendations, and I can do it.
Yes, would that be, at this point, a good place to take this discussion?
And, you know, I think that a lot of this, a lot of this was not necessarily controversial, so I'll just move through it very, very quickly. We recommended that you use the 7% for the actuarial rate of return. We recommended support for the city to close the Peace Road interchange agreement, which should result in a little bit of additional revenue for the city because we've more than paid the cost. There wasn't a sunset on that agreement. So, that was, those were pretty easy. Now, I will note that the FAC failed to recommend the support for a phase-out of the inter-fund transfers from the TIF into the general fund. If I'm not mistaken, just for purposes of full disclosure, I believe I recused myself on both of the TIF votes. There was a recommendation for support of the continuing the process of the creation of the new TIF. Obviously, you have to approve, you know, not even to the level of having the TIF study, et cetera. So, that's down the road. It's really not the FY 18 budget. One of the substantial things that Member Terazinski worked very hard on, as did the staff, is that all municipalities are running into trouble with not getting the revenues from the state that have been promised. And the revenue numbers were recommended to be adjusted to the best information that we had, which as of, I think, October 31st, if I'm not mistaken, Halloween, the Illinois Municipal League, which is the gold standard for estimating, dropped their estimate on what we'll get from the income tax revenue. So, that has been adjusted and reflected in the budget. In total, I believe, and Tom, correct me if I'm wrong, I think that the total effect was something like 700,000 in reduction in revenues. Does that sound about?
Between the two years, 17 and 18.
Yeah.
The impact, and it's in your numbers, but the impact for the 18 budget versus what was published, I think was 477,000.
Correct.
Yeah.
So, that reduction is in your number, which is causing some of the pain now.
Right. And so, that had to be funded.
Yep.
We re-endorced the minimum of 25% fund balance. We recommended, and this is a global recommendation, we recommended that capital and operating expenditures continue to be segregated. We pushed hard for that on the water system, and staff has been very good about showing us the progress on what the segregated balance is, even though it's an accounting segregation, what the segregated balance is for capital versus operating. And this is a continuing concern on the part of the Finance Advisory Committee, and it's something that plays into the recommendation that we gave with respect to the 1% sales tax as well that Tom already talked about. There was a recommendation that no new debt be incurred by the city or on the city's behalf until a financially balanced five-year financial plan iteration is completed. We don't have an iteration of the five-year financial plan that is balanced yet. We expect that to occur probably in the next six months or so. We're going to start working in January on trying to do that.
Mike, what does no new debt really mean? No new debt above the budgeted?
Well, there's no new borrowing in the budget. So, we're saying-
This is borrowing debt.
Yeah, no new borrowing until we know where we are down the road, especially no new borrowing that's going to support operations. Because we need, we already are in a precarious situation with respect to the fund balances when you get out to those out-years of 2021 and 2022. And until we get a handle on trying to have a plan that will, at least on paper, balance those things, we don't want to make it worse by borrowing with and creating debt service that we may not choose to prioritize as a community. When I say "we," I don't mean the committee. I don't mean the council. I mean, you know, all of us together as a community.
We know that new debt service would impact our rating with Moody's, probably.
Sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, and in fact-
Is there anything in our budget here that you see that is going to impact, that could impact the Moody's negatively? What is that?
Yes. There are a couple of things. Number one, this is my personal but professional opinion. I believe that not fully funding the pensions, because that's your big 800-pound gorilla. If you start showing that you're making progress on reducing the unfunded liability for the pensions, you're paying the regular, the normal cost of the pension. So, you're not digging yourself a hole because you're not paying what you owe for the current year's employees. But there's a big hole which just grows over time. And Moody's is going to look at what commitments you have to make against your fiscal capacity. And your fiscal capacity is going to be, how much can you really charge, you know, people over time with respect to the property taxes? And it seems kind of perverse, but the more you are true to your financial policies, first of all, the fact that you have financial policies is a positive when it comes to a bond rating. The fact that you adhere to those policies and that you have a track record of adhering to those policies is also going to be a positive for the bond-rating houses. Third, and this is something that I can only give as an example, this year has been a pretty good year in the market, okay? So, for every dollar that you would have put into the pension funds, you would have earned at least double-digit returns. And even with an assumption of 7.5%, which is an aggressive assumption on returns, you actually would have ended up better off at the end of the year for every one of those dollars that you put in there, because they're going to look at the balance that's in there. So, the sooner you can put money in, it's the power of compounding. It's just like anybody would do with their individual retirement savings. So, I think that actually you could conceivably, and I think with a positive probability that's not negligible, that if you begin to more aggressively finance the pension liability, you could actually see an improvement in your bond rating, and the improvement in your bond rating would actually save the city money. And if you save the city money, that's a positive. But in addition to that, if your investments are done well with respect to the fire and police pension plans, and they have good advisors, you're going to see your unfunded liability drop by a lot more than the contributions that you're making because of the market. And that's going to have a positive effect, because it's like your mortgage balance. If you have a lower mortgage balance, that's going to be positive. We recommended, I'm sorry, Tony?
Well, I just want to throw in a comment, and maybe I'm not thinking correctly, but I believe, and I don't want to say it as blatantly as this is, but I don't believe Moody's is going to improve our rating until we increase taxes. They want to see more of the city's, not just the pension, they would like to see more into a tax which is a guaranteed revenue versus the general fund revenues we have through sales tax and other things like that. So, I thought we had this discussion that the only thing we can do to really improve our rating with them is to charge more property tax, to put more burden into our property tax. And in the environment we're in right now, I don't think that's possible at all.
Well, and that's a decision that has to be made. No question about it. But you have absolutely nailed it, that when you look at reliable sources of revenue, say what you will about how unpopular the property tax is, when you look to rating the financial stability, it's the property tax that they're going to look at as a stable source of revenue. If you just keep funding things out of the general fund with, you know, sales taxes, hotel motel taxes, whatever, those are not considered stable sources of revenue. And property taxes, yeah, I mean, the simplest answer with respect to property taxes is you have very little bleed. When you extend your property taxes, you're getting somewhere between 98 and 100% of what you extended, because people buy property taxes. And it's, you get it within a month or two of the second tax bill. So, that's considered, you know, property doesn't go away. I mean, and you can find the owner. As much as people try to hide, you can find the owner and you can also put liens on the We, now, this gets to be rather interesting. In the initial vote, we failed to recommend a 1% increase in the home rule sales tax to be split in accordance with the staff recommendation. That was a unanimous vote. There was a recommended increase in the spending from TIF funds on the roads from 500,000 to a million dollars. That's not general fund. That was approved by a five-to-one. Recommended 1.5 million in budget balancing measures, and there was a lengthy discussion as to what the dollar amount should be, but I think that that's kind of taken care of itself, the fact that there needed to be some cuts, and the council has been taking that. Now, what happened is, at the end of the meeting, there were two motions that were made to revisit the 1% home rule sales tax. And the committee's consensus was that we did not want to approve a general sales tax increase that would be devoted to operations as a general purpose. There was a feeling, and it was passed by the committee by a four-to-two vote, that we adopted 0.25% increase in the home rule sales tax, with that to be earmarked for hiring three new police officers, with the excess, rather than going to operational stabilization of funds, with the excess going towards Streets and Fleet. And a 0.75% increase that was for capital-only, for Streets and Fleet. Now, what this comes out to, I think, is approximately 3.3 million for Streets and Fleet, and that's still considerably below what the needs were that were expressed in the capital master plan, if you will. But there was a feeling on the part of the majority of the committee that we needed to make a down payment on Streets and Fleet.
Is that split recommendation in this budget?
No, the budget was put out prior.
Okay.
Well, it, not prior, they, it was prior to this recommendation, and so it includes the 1% without-
We have the 1% in there. We just don't have that breakout as recommended by the Finance Advisory Committee.
What you have in the budget is a 1% sales tax that was unanimously rejected by the Finance Advisory Committee. But rather, a different version of that sales tax. And to the extent that it was possible, we wanted that 0.75% to be written in ordinance that if it couldn't have a sunset date, that there would be a date that it would have to be, at the latest, it would have to be revisited. The idea was that we were supportive of getting rid of the backlog of Streets and Fleet, which is a catch-up. But we didn't want to just give an open-ended tax increase that could then be shifted to operations and avoid some of the tough questions that we have to face on the-
Yeah. Mike, I appreciate the recommendations from Finance. I would be interested in hearing from other members of Finance Advisory Committee regarding not only your recommendations, if that's okay with you, Mike?
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely. Everybody-
Is now a good time to do that? I'm looking at the council to hear all of them.
Did I hear group recommendations with that last one?
I'm sorry?
Was that the last?
That was the last one.
Yes, right, right. That was listed on that memo we got on the 7th of November. Anybody?
We just went around it in our committee meeting, so I think just go right around it.
Okay. I'm not putting anybody on the spot, or I'm not calling anybody on anybody who doesn't want to say anything, but since you suggested that, Lynn, would you like to make any comments regarding the Finance Advisory Committee's recommendations to the council? Or are you satisfied that we're moving in the right direction as a team here?
Well, I was able to keep most of the votes.
Well, I was able to keep most of the votes on these recommendations.
Okay.
So I'm happy with these. I do, I realize I'm repeating what you, oh, oh my goodness. Oh, I am so sorry. Oh, my, please excuse me. I was quite pleased with the recommendations we came up with, and I will ask you to excuse me for repeating some things that Mike has already said about the importance of the pension obligations. This same thing is, most everybody around the table knows, overhanging, underfunded pension obligations are a tremendous burden or impingement, or whatever you want to call it, across the entire United States. And to be able to work on getting those unfunded liabilities worked down is absolutely one of the most important things that we could do as a community. And everybody who's ever listened to me knows how I'm always pitching for the three guys and their departments that are here, and I want to see better dump trucks and all that kind of stuff. So that's all I got to say.
Thank you. Steve, you?
Yeah, we had good meetings, and I think a lot of them recommendations were strong. And after we'd agreed that the 0.75 sales tax would be dedicated strictly to capital, streets and fleets, I kind of recommended that the other 0.25 be passed in order to support the additional three police officers. So I think that's something that, it's obvious that I think that's desperately needed.
Good. Was that approved?
I'm sorry?
Was that approved?
Yes, yes. Four to two vote.
Tom, do you ever have an opinion on these numbers?
Well, try to clarify, right? Couple things. I think the number one important thing is to address this operational, the operational issues.
The operational what?
The operational issues.
Okay.
You know, when you look at the five-year forecast, and we dropped the fund balance down to 3 million in the five-year projection, is telling us, and I think actually Lynn went on at some length about her concerns, and she pointed it out to the FAC members, about her concerns about what's happening to that general fund balance, indicating that we have a fairly severe structural imbalance. And the addressing of that be a number is a very high priority. To enable you to feel secure in your safety measures, if you will, to feel secure in that, you need to have the rest of the organization in sync to enable you to get to a structure that's sound, or you will never be secure. Everyone will be on pins and needles continually throughout this period without addressing that. And that's where the $1.5 million got thrown on the table, and the council now has taken that up. But to me, that is a high priority, high priority to address on a long-term basis. And we talked about, if necessary, to keep the budget process open until that five-year process could be addressed on an ongoing basis, so that any longer-term discussions that are necessary can't be crammed into a two-week period here in the middle of December trying to get to a really good structured thought process, either from the council or maybe even the staff. How else do you get at significant numbers in the long term? I think that was a whole part of our discussion, was driven by this five-year projection.
Could you address logistically what that keeping the budget process open might mean to us?
Well, that was just me, okay? But I think there was a sense, I think that the committee was open to an ongoing discussion, not just on a five-year strategic plan, but on getting the budget process nailed down.
We intend to, and actually, I've talked to the city manager about this, I know the mayor has talked to the city manager about this, we intend to start on the FY19 budget in January. We believe that it's that important. This is the first time that we've had the five-year strategic plan. The committee pushed for that for a long time, and there are some changes that, or there are some adjustments, I shouldn't say changes, that we would like to see in that process. But we have to start at the 30,000-foot level and say, where do we want to be? And one of the things that we want to be, and if there's any disagreement among the committee, there's more agreement than there is disagreement. You know, the starting point is, we know that we are firmly committed, every one of us is firmly committed to maintaining the fund balances at the, you know, appropriate level of above 25 percent. Well, right now, what we're seeing in the five-year financial plan is something that is considerably short of that. And there has to be a well-reasoned, lengthy discussion that is fruitful about how the leadership of the community, including people in this room and outside this room, are going to come to some kind of a consensus as to where we need to move forward to remove that.
I would just make one clarifying comment, because this five-year planning, strategic planning, has been a big issue and something we need to drive. My comment was really more about, really addressing keeping 18 open. Literally, you can have a budget amendment anytime the council so directs. And because you pass something and you need some technical ability to pass something and have something in place on 1231 or whatever the regulations say, but that doesn't mean you can't have an amendment on March 31st, and if you're not satisfied with this list, to continue to develop a well-reasoned approach. And that would dovetail into a continuing discussion about a really longer-term strategic plan, but to get to address this. So that was the nature of that comment. That's all I had.
Ron?
Mayor and City Council, I'm a big believer in the numbers will set you free, and I agree with most of the recommendations. We disagreed on a few areas. I also believe if you get too steeped in, and by numbers will set you free, I mean, if you know what you're dealing with, then you've got the information you need to make decisions or go forward. I also notice sometimes this committee and City Council will give directives, this is a little observation, and we don't always like the results we get. I don't believe for a minute that they don't work hard and, you know, they give us what we want. Sometimes we're a little unhappy and we get the result of it, because that's not, you're talking about this 5.1 versus 5.6 million. I do believe in the numbers. I also believe, I've got a little different angle from it, I also believe you look at the person and the people and the community. And I get a little concerned, and you have to be fiscally responsible, I'm all for most of this. If we make the city too, you know, there's a fine line between very fiscally aggressive and responsible and getting mean-spirited. And my concern is if we get too in-depth with just numbers and not the situation, you know, you run the risk of saving a buck and losing more because the city doesn't look attractive, you don't have social services, you don't have other services. Interesting in a time of crime, we're going to cut social services, and that's one of my areas that I am an advocate for, but when we need them more. I'm a big advocate in keeping, you know, we have a crime issue, we all know, in DeKalb, and so I have a little bit of an issue if we cut too much in the police department or streets, you know. Everyone's fine with cutting it unless it's your street, and we all know where we live. If you have a street that looks bad or feels bad, or you're embarrassed to have people come to your house because it's so rough and rundown, and I'm sure they get tired of the calls. So, I mean, that's where I'm at. I'm in agreement with most of this, I just think we have to keep a perspective on it. It's too easy to sit here and say, oh, God, let's cut this, and if you're the one, the ambulance doesn't get to your house because I broke down, or some other equipment error, or if we burn out the staff too much, you can cut, but if you cut too much, you get into that burnout phase where people aren't going to want, you can talk about cutting stuff all you want, if people don't want to come to work for you, then you haven't really solved a problem, you've created a new one, so.
And I think that it's very important not to diminish the contribution of any committee member, but having Mr. Partridge at the table is extremely helpful because he represents the social services, he represents the mental health side of the budget, he represents the human side of the budget, never lets us forget that. And that's an important expertise, and it's an important thing to have. I just want to make one other very quick comment, which is not related to our recommendations. And this is not a lemming argument, this is just an observation. This year's budget cycle across the state for municipalities has been extremely interesting to watch. And you can go out there and see that I'm not cherry-picking this. Communities that have not been in financial stress or in less financial stress, there are so many communities out there that are proposing new taxes, new revenues, and this is, I'm not going to say it's unprecedented, but it is very, very, very notable. And so I would just suggest we're not alone with a lot of the stress that we're feeling.
David?
I think a lot of good things have been said, and we've had a lot of good discussions. I think the one thing that occurs to me is that, is I think will occur next year, having enough time, there were lots and lots of details in the budget that I would have appreciated some time to have some conversation about, some individual line items, and some of them have come up, today's presentation from directors and department heads. But that's something that, the sooner we get into that, the better we can work through them before a crisis or a hurry-up-and-decide-something situation faces. So I like the progress that we're making more often, and discussions were flowing pretty well, so.
Mayor, could I add a couple items?
Sure.
So just for everyone's purpose, the council, the committee, and the community, I made a conscious decision that we heard, staff heard very clearly from the Finance Advisory Committee of the importance of the five-year financial plan. So after our previous Finance Director Kathy Haley left, staff focused on two items. Number one, doing the initial revenue projections for the fiscal year 18 budget, and number two, putting together that five-year financial plan that we had promised and committed to the Finance Advisory Committee. So that became a focal point of getting that, and I think you can hear from them that, how important that document is, and we look forward to future conversations with the committee and making changes that are going to address their concerns. So number two, in light of that, as I mentioned, our previous director left, I looked at, what is the budget process and the timing? And one of the things I looked at is, the process got delayed a little bit, so I will take full responsibility for that because I made a conscious decision to wait until Molly Talkington started as our next Finance Director, especially knowing that we were facing some financial issues, having her come from the City of Champaign, another university town that is sparing sing similar issues and is twice our size, I thought it was going to be beneficial during our budget process. And I will tell you that she has had an extremely positive impact early in the budget process. So next year, and as we talked about with Chair Peddle, we will start those discussions with the Finance Advisory Committee in January. The other thing Director Talkington and I have talked about and mentioned to the mayor today is we'd like to bring a schedule or bring an outline to the City Council at the January 8th City Council meeting, or Committee of the Whole meeting, start talking about budget process with all of you, to get an understanding of what the council wants, when the council wants it, and what is the role of the FAC. Because last year, when we had all the budget meetings, which were combined between the FAC and the City Council, much of the direction that I heard, I thought, really was focused on what the role of the FAC was. So making sure they reviewed the audit, to having the actuaries present on the police and fire pension funds, going over the five-year financial plan, looking at the revenues at six months. So many of those things we discussed jointly were the items that, of those six meetings that FAC had, were really going up that next level and digging deeper into the budget. So we look forward, I've had a number of conversations with Director Talkington and suggestions she has of the budget process that she has seen to be very successful in the City of Champaign, and we'd like to replicate and take some of that here. And I think what will really go with the direction of where the council wants to go and where the FAC wants to go. And lastly, what I would just add, two other things, Mr. Mayor. Number one, I would say in relation to where we go from here, we're not looking for direction from the council on the reductions, it's not fair to you. We handed this document out tonight. If anything, we did it so you would have it earlier than November 27th. So we are not looking for any feedback, I don't feel like that's fair to you, that you're going to feel blindsided. We wanted to get it to you as quickly as possible, so you have it for 11 days. Number two, knowing we were supposed to have a separate special council meeting immediately after this one, one suggestion I would have for all of you, since we didn't fully understand the motion that was made the other night, is we could bring a revised property tax levy to you as part of that meeting if you so choose, so that you can review it prior to the November 27th Committee of the Whole and City Council meeting. So we want to make sure we're directly hitting what your direction is because that levy then impacts the reductions. So if that meets with your direction, we would do that, but we'll wait to hear from you. But I want to make sure that you don't feel like you have to provide any direction tonight. We wanted to get this document out to you.
Well, your comments notwithstanding, Anne Marie, I feel it would be only fair to allow this council tonight to address some of the items that we heard as it relates to your recommendations in terms of the 5 percent budget cuts. With that in mind, I'd like to open it up for our own council discussion, keeping in mind that we also want your thoughts as a Finance Advisory Committee, so let's have a good interchange of thought here, discussion, keeping in mind, again, that we're going to make no firm decisions. I'd also, I have not forgotten that we have some people in the audience who would like to speak to items that we've been discussing tonight, and we'll make sure that happens here very, very shortly. So with that, any?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
May I just interject, and I know you and I have talked about this briefly. What was presented tonight by staff was the 5 percent reduction.
Right.
And I think it's important, as the discussion takes place, the fact that there aren't going to be decisions made tonight, but the fact that if you chose to go to a lower level of reduction, say a 2.5 percent reduction, which was one of the other scenarios that was considered, that there be a package that's associated, rather than trying to cherry-pick items, I think it's important to keep the big picture. Because any of these items, there are very few of these items that are six figures. There are very few that are in the $100,000 range. So, you know, it might be really easy to pick on the municipal bank, but the big picture is you're trying to reach a million to $2 million in cuts, and you need to keep that big picture.
And Mr. Chair and Mr. Mayor, if I could address that, our plan as staff for the November 27th meeting is to provide you with three scenarios. So number one, and I highlighted this during my opening comments, and so this was based on feedback that has been invaluable and provided by Chair Peddle and Mayor Smith. So we want to be able to, for your November 27th, provide you multiple options, but at least three, and then if you want to modify those. But number one, the reductions to equate to maintaining the 25 percent fund balance. Number two, a 2.5 percent overall reduction. And number three, the 5.0 percent overall reduction. So you've got the 5 percent. So as staff, now we need to build the 2.5 in maintaining the 25 percent fund balance. We wanted to present the most difficult one, the worst-case scenario with the 5 percent. We will now go back and build the others and present that to you at the meeting on the 27th.
Good. That appears to be a good plan, and I saw your hand first, Alderman Fagan.
Yep, Molly, you'll redo these numbers here.
Right, so any?
Because that's going to be a big swing.
So let me clarify. So what I heard on the property tax levy, that I will go back and adjust for Monday, is to bring the rate back to the 7.0 percent for police and fire and fund that within the 5.2.
is to bring the rate back to the 7.0% for police and fire and fund that within the 5.2% overall tax levy.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And if you could get that-
And it will be adjusted in these forecasts with those-
All right. And then we'll get these before the 27th, so we have some time to look at it. Do you think that's your-
What, sleep?
Yeah. Well, I'm just saying is, you know, this is great to look at, but just to bring it right in front of us today, it's a little, you know what I'm saying? So, we're a little more-
Welcome to the Cal, happy Thanksgiving.
Do whatever you can, put it fast.
What's that, David? I said, "Welcome to the Cal, happy Thanksgiving."
Monday was thrown out, is it Monday or Tuesday?
It's Tuesday, I'm sorry, I stayed the wrong day, it's Tuesday. So, my apologies. So, I think there's two things, Alderman Fagan, to address your point. So, number one, we will revise the property tax levy, the memo that was distributed tonight, if it pleases the council to bring this to you on Tuesday, November 21st. So, that means, with this being Thursday, we would have to get the agenda out tomorrow, and if Molly can turn the item around, have that in the packet. If not, we would post the agenda for Tuesday and distribute via email the information on Monday. We will work as quickly, and I don't want to promise until I know how long it takes to do the calculations. But number two, we also have the separate two agendas for Monday, November 27th. So, you'll have the Committee of the Whole, which we're doing the public hearing on the tax levy at the Committee of the Whole meeting, at the City Council, I'm sorry, the public hearing on the property tax levy at the Committee of the Whole, and we're doing the public hearing on the budget at the City Council meeting. So, you will also have a packet going out by the day before Thanksgiving, by next Wednesday, if not sooner, with all that information for the 27th meeting.
Speaking of sleep or lack thereof, David, recall that we have a meeting in executive session for next Monday.
Tuesday.
Tuesday.
Is that, that's been moved to Tuesday?
Tuesday.
So, we will have both of those meetings on one day?
It's one meeting.
Yeah, yeah, right, okay, good, okay. I thought we had that one scheduled for Monday, but it is Tuesday. Good, okay. I think Alderman Noriko and then Alderman Fanouk.
I have a question, clarification needed for the, one of the fire department reductions. You know, training reduction of $10,000, but you say that elimination of training recommended to maintain minimum fire department competencies. I'm concerned in terms of eliminating something that may be a requirement. When you say it's recommended, who recommends it and how stringent is that recommendation? In other words, are we going to have firemen who potentially aren't trained to appropriate standards, or you're putting them in harm's way if they don't get additional training? Can you put it into some context?
So, for a new hire, there's basic standards such as hazmat operations.
Uh-huh.
So, we work toward getting that new hire, all those qualifications.
Okay.
Another example is officer training. An APA has qualifications for a fire officer. So, there's no way we can accomplish the whole goal in one year, but each year, we try to work toward the goal of either Fire Officer One or Fire Officer Two. It takes a few years to get there, but we're constantly trying to get to that goal. So, with this schedule, we'll just have to back off a little bit, you know, in order to accomplish the goal, but it will be accomplished eventually.
Okay. Thank you.
Alderman Fanouk.
Thank you. A couple of quick questions, Molly, just to make sure that you and I understand each other in this. So, one of the things you'll bring back is that you'll bring back that the total cost of the pension payments would be, assuming the 7.0 rate of return.
Correct.
And then also, though, you'll also bring in the new number for the property tax revenues so that we can see what the shortfall will be and be able to determine that.
Correct.
All right. And then one other quick question in several places, and here you mentioned dollar amounts for non-bargaining unit increases, but it's only in two departments. So, if we could see what that would be across all departments, what that total would be, that would be helpful.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear what you asked.
Okay, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Just for an example, in the City Manager's Office report here, it says non-bargaining unit increase, and it mentions a $153,000 number. And then there's one other department that has some numbers, but it doesn't go across the board. So, like, not every department has, and what I'd like to see is what the total would be if it was all the non-bargaining unit.
That actually is the total non-bargaining unit across the board reduction, the 153 would be for all-
Across all departments?
Right, so it's just sitting in the City Manager's Office, kind of list of reductions.
Okay, but I thought I saw in one of the other documents that was handed out tonight that there was a much higher number for increases in fire and PD alone that were non-barg- No, no, it said non-bargaining unit, I think. I want to make sure I read that right. I will look for it. Thank you.
Alderman Fagan?
I just had a question for, I guess, Chair Peddle or Molly. In the past, I know our policy is to levy for the increase in the pension. And I just want to, the question, I guess I'm asking, because you made a comment that we're not fully funding the pension, but is that we're not fully funding the pension through the levy, which is our policy, but I was under the impression that we were fully funding our pension obligation and the additional increase each year as the shortfall occurs, we were using 7.5%, and we've made a large step this year to go back to 7%. But I believe that we are funding our obligation. Is that not correct?
At full. So, there's two, kind of two points to that. One, it's, the pensions include police, fire, IMR, FICA. So, when we look at the policy, your financial policy around it, your very first one is to fully fund police, fire, and IMR through the property tax levy. So, that's where you're not fully funding it with that tax levy, right? Yes, the difference to whatever amount we've assumed or in the budget is being picked up through the general fund, other revenue sources. The first proposed budget you have, did have the pension for police and fire at the 7.0 investment return rate. The changes I made in this five-year forecast that you got tonight return that back to 7.5, so that adjustment will be made on Monday to go back to the 7.0. But when, most of the references to fully funding the pensions is that you're not fully funding them through property tax. And so, your very first point with police, fire, and IMR is, while you may fund police and fire fully, you are not funding IMR through the property tax levy. So, last year, you funded $72,000 of IMR. Your second point is FICA, and FICA has not been funded through the tax levy. So, I think when we, there's some interchange between pensions, meaning just police and fire, and pensions, meaning police, fire, IMR, and FICA.
But that's not what I mean. I mean, you're not, you're not funding fully your obligation based upon conservative actuarial projections. Because the city is allowed to use its own actuaries. And those result in a lower pension contribution than is recommended by other actuaries. And as a result of having done that, there's a false impression that you're fully funding the pension liability when it's actually just accumulating and growing. You got good actuaries, but they're making assumptions that are-
The state, yeah, so the state went to 6.5%, and we're, like I said, we're making, so, well, let me go back, I'll address it. So, we are fully funding our pension obligations every single year. We're not not paying Social Security or FICA, we're not not paying the makeup difference, we're paying them, we're just policy-wise not fully funding them through property tax.
Correct.
Which, I'd like to note-
No, no, no.
We need to discuss that policy because I don't know that it's, with the exponential
increase in the obligation, I don't know that we want to tie it specifically.
You don't have a choice.
Your statement-
But, okay.
So, I could see how your statement could be an accurate way of representing it, but the caveat is, you're fully funding, and I think this is the difference, you're fully funding to what your actuarial assumptions are now. So, what Chair Peddle is saying is, 7.5% is an aggressive investment rate return.
I agree.
So, the change to go to 7% is better, but the odds of still accumulating some unfunded liability because you're not going to always meet 7% is still higher than if you went lower to 6.5% or 7%, or if you adjust some other, there are a few other portions of your actuary assumptions that could be adjusted to also help you be more on track to hitting your obligation without adding unfunded liability each year. So, the statement that the budget funds the police and fire pensions is, we fund them fully to your actuarial assumptions you have now.
And-
And that's the fundamental difference, I think, between what we're saying.
Okay, and this is, this is the general view of finance analysts. The home rule jurisdictions in Illinois, and I think it's limited to home rule, can choose their own actuary. And what's happening is, by not funding to the state actuary number, these pension funds are getting increasingly underfunded, and that liability is growing over time. So, nothing nefarious because other jurisdictions do this, but the purpose of having your own actuary bluntly is to reduce the contribution that you're making toward these pensions. And it's catching up with people. And what I'm suggesting is that even if you're funding fully to the recommendation of 7% from the actuaries, you're still being, the actuarial assumptions are still very aggressive compared to what you would get from- Compared to reality. Yeah. All right. I wasn't going to say that, but, but, yeah.
How is that, how is that actuary determined?
You hire them, you hire them.
We put out a request for proposals, and then you, I don't know the term of our current agreement, but I would say it's typical that it's usually a three to five-year time that you stick with one, then you go back out, and then you generally don't go back with the same with the actuary. You change it, similar to your auditors, you give them three to five years, then you pick a new one, then you go out again every three to five years.
Alderman Jacobson?
Again, to be clear, in looking at the actuaries, we've always funded to what our perception of the actuaries have told us we've had to do in this community. We've always made our annual pension contribution as we saw was required. In doing that, we're now, what, 40% funded in our pension funds? I mean, we're $60 million underfunded, and we're doing that again this year. I mean, in reducing it down to seven, it is softening that blow up to the ramp-up that we're going to need to make over time, without a doubt, if we want to do this, to reliably go down to the state's number of 6.5, which I still think is aggressive based on the last five and 10-year actuals. I think would obviously add another several million if you increased the expected lifespan, that ours is very rosy in terms of a 20-year amortization, you're going to talk about a significant increase in what we owe each year. And to tie that to property taxes, you'd be looking at about doubling our property taxes to make the full pension obligation, that is the real full pension obligation, and cover IMR, and cover FICA, and cover all the things in our financial policy, you're talking about doubling our property taxes just to make the bare minimum. That doesn't go toward any of our already unfunded $60 million liability, which is going to increase by changing this actuarial down to 7%. So, again, I don't want anyone to turn around and pat themselves on the back and say, "Hey, we did it this year, we didn't, we're making progress-ish," I guess, in some way, shape, or form, but the reality is, we don't have any money to contribute toward the backlog that we have. We're not even planning any money going forward to put toward our pension liability. And I appreciate Mike saying that absolutely that's something that we're being looked at when we're rating. What are we putting back toward what we haven't already paid? The answer's zero. The reality right now is we're not even making our minimum contribution, and to do that would be next to impossible. So, again, I think the, that discussion is very important, I think, in looking at these 5% of cuts, what it's going to take this time through. When we've asked for these things in the past, generally, they weren't that difficult. They were, "Oh, we'll move this here, we'll move that column here, we'll pull around," it wasn't that difficult, and the answer came, we're to the bottom of the barrel at this point. We're talking some significant losses that only demonstrate how close we are to the cliff, as far as I'm concerned. There isn't any more room. There isn't any more shell game room to make this happen. If we were honest with ourselves, if we went to the actuaries that we should be using, I think it would force more swift action on our part. I appreciate the fact of why we can't at this point, I mean, it would bankrupt us, but this is what insolvency looks like. When I've been crying from this seat or screaming from this seat for the last six years, that we're headed toward the iceberg, we're staring at it. This is it, there's nothing left to cut.
I think it's important to talk about two other assumptions that are going into the actuary. First of all, the actuary that you hired, and I understand this, but it's a reality rather than, or I'm sorry, it's a recommendation rather than a reality. They're recommending that you only seek to fund 90%, which, you know, that may be legal, but that's how you can get into trouble, is if you're not aggressive enough, especially as the age of the workforce changes. The other thing that some of the actuaries are doing, and frankly, I don't remember what we have in this actuary, is they keep moving things out where they're allowing you more years to fund the liability, and that's just kicking the can down.
They're probably looking at what other communities are doing, what-
Nobody can cover these stats, it's not just us locally. The reality of the pension system is it's failed.
Did you happen to bring that article?
It has epically failed.
I don't have it with me, I can email it to anybody who's lucky.
Yeah, it was just, you know, the universality of this problem, as you alluded to. Alderman Noriko?
As I recall, when we were talking about the tax levy, I think it was two years ago, it was brought out that we were not following the recommended method of taking a look at our funding requirement, and we said essentially, "Oh, my God, we can't afford to just automatically switch to this other method," which accounted for the fact that unfortunately, we're all living longer. And so, we recognized the need to do that, but we took, but we were kind of taking a phased-in approach. So, Chair Peddle, you know, to your point that, you know, basically, we aren't looking at reality, at least we're looking at recognizing that there's a reality, I mean-
We're less broke.
Yeah, well, I mean-
We're less bankrupt.
Well, we're, I mean, you know, before, it was like we were living in a dreamland of funding, and now, we're like, "Okay, this is what we have to do, and we're only part way there." So, you know, I wanted some recognition of the fact that we are trying to be more fiscally responsible, and, you know, it's hell, frankly, to try to figure it all out.
And let's be clear, some of the stuff we have no control over. The state refused to release funding for some period of time, you know-
The state refused to release funding for some period of time. Unionsies weren't paid. I mean, when we talk about totality of this, there's some things, and you're right, we're not realistic. I didn't mention that. Pensions are our number one issue. But there's some factors at play that we have to deal with. That's why all communities are struggling now, because, you're right, we lived in, Illinois was just constant growth, and our properties were increasing eight to ten percent, you know, five percent every year. And it was like a piggy bank, and now, we're really in a bad state. We're already overtaxed, if we're realistic. And our schools are heavily reliant on it. We've never, the state's never figured that problem out. So, I mean, I agree with you on that case.
Can I say one statement?
Sure.
To correct some information. One, you did make a change to, I forget the NICE wife saying mortality tables? So you've moved them, so you're-
Yeah, there's a different method, yeah.
Right, so you changed that method that has been, I think you did it last year, or the-
Two years ago.
Maybe two years ago.
Yeah, right, two. So that was, made a change. You, you're now on a more consistent table that realizes that both police and fire live longer than expected in the original tables that you had. And you also changed the method, that you're now on an entry age method. So you have made some other actuarial changes that do help you for the better. Changing the investment rate is just kind of another step in that direction. And I am double checking, but I thought we were funding to a hundred percent, but that the actuaries said we could go to ninety percent, but I'm double checking that.
Their numbers were ninety percent.
Keeping in mind that we do have some folks who would like to make a few comments. Mike, if you don't mind, I think I'm gonna have those three folks say-
Sure.
What we found at console, frankly, is that many times, what we hear from folks in the audience is a catalyst for some, some good conversation. So I hope these are in the order that they were received. The first speaker is Dwayne Brown. We have, okay, we have another one, okay?
Dwayne Brown, fourth ward. We have an upcoming 2018 fiscal year budget, which has to be approved. One of the problems is wage growth. During the next four years, wage growth will be thirteen percent projected. I have some quotes from the alderman I'd like to share with you from the previous November seventh meeting. Quote, "This budget has significant property tax increases and adds sales tax increases, and doesn't even keep our head above water," unquote. I think that is spot on from the alderman. Another quote, "This community cannot afford to pay anymore. Budget balancing is not going on the backs of taxpayers," unquote. Another quote, "Regular wages are outpacing our revenue and growth," unquote. This is from the mayor. "The general fund balance under this budget would be three million, three hundred and one thousand in four years." I heard it might be five years. Moody's downgraded DeKalb's bond rating to A1 due to elevated debt burden above the state and national medians and underfunding pension liability. "I believe the funding levels for DeKalb's police, last numbers I had, were fifty percent for the police, and for DeKalb's Fire was forty-four point eight percent." That was the last I had. You can correct me if I'm wrong. "I had, out of all the taxing districts in DeKalb County that receive property tax revenue, only three have doubled their property tax rate since 2006. The Park District, the District 428 School Board, and the City of DeKalb. We need additional funding for streets. Using the pavement condition index ranking from zero to one hundred, the average condition of DeKalb's streets is at seventy-eight. It will cost thirteen million per year to keep the average at this level. If we fund at one million, three hundred thousand per year, in ten years, the average street condition will be fifty-nine, which is considered failing condition. Earlier this year, the city contracted Ehrler's to do a study on permanent funding source for roads and streets and vehicle replacement. They gave the city four options. Increase the motor fuel tax four cents per gallon, which would generate seven hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Two, vehicle stickers at fifty dollars each, which would generate one million. Three, a trash hauler fee, which would generate four hundred thousand. And four, I'm not sure, I heard the financial advisory didn't approve this, a one percent home rule sales in tax, increase, sales tax increase, which would generate three million, one hundred and fifty-five thousand per year. Ehrler's options are not very palatable for the DeKalb taxpayers, and I reject them all. However, if I were forced to choose one, it would be the trash hauler index. DeKalb's fleet consists of a hundred and seventy-three units with a replacement value of twelve million. The city is, is four million behind in replacing vehicles. The count, and we know, we're not gonna replace all at once. It's gotta be very gradual and slowly. The county board is determined to balance its budget after a seven hundred and forty thousand dollar hole was created after the departure of a sham company that sold jet fuel to American Airlines because of a lawsuit by the Regional Transportation Authority. But they're determined to balance their budget, and they're doing so. They also said tax, uh, sales revenue were down. The, the finance director made a statement that we have a slim budget. Well, that's probably true. Before she worked, Glenview, Champaign, and Naperville, I have some statistics here. DeKalb has a per capita income of twenty thousand, eighty-five dollars. A household income of thirty-eight thousand, nine hundred and fifteen, and rent is a median of eight hundred and seventy-eight per month. And the cost of living index is one oh two point three, compared to the U.S. average of one hundred. I, I believe the finance director might think DeKalb has a slim budget compared to Naperville that has a per capita income of forty-eight thousand, three hundred and six. And Glenview, which has home prices at, oh, and, and three hundred and ninety-nine thousand, two hundred dollars for the median home price. Glenview has a per capita income of fifty-four thousand, seven hundred and ninety-eight dollars, and a median household income of ninety-five thousand, nine hundred and forty dollars. And the median house price is over half a million dollars, compared to DeKalb's a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. So I can see why she terms us a slim budget. I have a food environmental statistic for, for you. DeKalb County has thirteen supermarkets for a level of one point two four per ten thousand population, compared to the state level of two point two four per ten thousand population. We need a balanced budget without a tax increase and without dropping the reserve fund below twenty-five percent. If necessary, two to five percent cuts should be made for each department. If, if necessary. I don't, I don't add any additional tax. Please don't add any additional tax to the already overburdened taxpayer. We have enough. Make the budget balance. Cuts are never, are never fun. They're, they're controversial. But if you're gonna do it, and it has to be done, do it equally. Don't make the streets suffer. Don't, you know, do it equally, and, and cut it and be done if we have to. That's what we're facing. Thank you.
Thank you, Dwayne. William Heinisch, Will?
Good evening. Will Heinisch, a local businessman, a local landlord and property owner. I kinda came to this meeting, and I thought we were walking a tight rope in a big black hole. Now I feel like we're free-falling in that big black hole. But one thing that wasn't really talked about was growth. The only way I see that we can lift ourselves out of this is through growth. And whether it be through grow our way out of this. And I didn't hear anybody talk about that tonight. We need to grow through residential, commercial, and business to generate more income, more property value. But I don't want us to cut that off. The thing I'm concerned about, one of the issues is the one percent proposed sales tax. To give you a little background, in our business in two thousand seven, two thousand eight, we had to cut. We lost fifty percent of our employees, fifty percent of our business. When DeKalb was building two, three hundred homes a year, it was booming. We had to slowly rebuild. And as we've rebuilt the business over the past number of years, my competitors have closed in Elburn, Rochelle, Big Rock, Sycamore. And it's forced our business model to go outside DeKalb. So we go all the way to Springfield now, and Bloomington, and I traveled to Peoria. Versus before two thousand eight, we were pretty much just in the county. So as our business model has grown, most of my sales are five thousand now to a hundred thousand dollars, because I sell equipment. And a lot of other businesses in DeKalb are in similar things. If you increase one percent sales tax, my closest competitors now are actually in the county. They're six and a half percent. I'm already at a one and a half percent disadvantage to them. Rochelle's at seven. I'm at one percent disadvantage to them. I have to absorb that to be competitive. If you raise another percent, I can't absorb the loss. Since two thousand eight, we've had to go on thinner margins and higher volumes. And I'm wondering how many other business models in DeKalb are under the same structures. I don't wanna lose more business. We need to figure out how to bring more business to DeKalb. And going one percent higher, I think, will be a detriment. Likewise, we mentioned the whole state. We need to be the cleanest shirt in the dirty hamper. So how do we make our community more attractive than other communities that have the similar problems? Other communities have these pension problems and are all free-falling. We just need to figure out how to put a parachute to help lift ourself up above everybody else and let everybody else fall faster than us into the black hole. Is that positive? Gene Lowery wanted positive comments, so I'm trying to be positive. And I just wanted to say, I support the Safe Streets Initiative. I support holding our property taxes level. If we can keep our property taxes level, and people don't feel that increase, hopefully, we'll get more people in our community, become more attractive than other communities. We have to be realistic. I thank you for your time, and I'm sure you'll be hearing from me again. Thank you.
Thank you, Will. Our next speaker is Sarah Dorner. Did I get that name right? Dorner?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Second, okay. So I'm Sarah Dorner. I am a staff representative with the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, representing Local Eight Thirteen here at the City of DeKalb. I've not previously come and spoken with you, because we've actually had a pretty amicable relationship with the city administration in the three years that I have been representative with this group. A little background on me, I grew up in Rockford, Illinois. And I always thought, I'm sorry, I always thought NIU was DeKalb. And I knew that DeKalb had cornfast and barbed wire. So, I learned a lot about DeKalb when I became a staff representative here. And if you want to love a city, and I mean, really love a city and a community, talk with the people who take care of that city on a daily basis. Throughout my years with this group, I have met with the public works employees, the telecommunicators, the administrative staff that run this city on a daily basis. They know every egress, they know every corner, every house, every lot, every street. Every street where the curb is high, every street where there is no curb. They know every pipe. They know what's under most of your houses. They know and love this community. It's part of them. And so one thing occurred to me as I listened to your debate tonight and your conversation. First of all, I don't envy any of you. I think that you have very difficult jobs ahead of you. I think that it's very clear to everyone that you are trying to be conscientious in your decisions as you try to make thoughtful choices for this city. But one thing that did speak to me is the constant reference to items and services. And I ask that, as you consider these items and services, you consider the people who are these items and services. The people who have, some of them more than thirty years of service with this city. The people whose fathers and mothers and grandfathers worked with this city. I invite all of you, and he doesn't know I invited you, but my friend Steve Rippey is a Water Department crew tech leader. Some of you know Steve Rippey. I admire him dearly. But what I love about Steve Rippey is if you walk through the Water Department building with Steve Rippey, and you look at the pictures along the wall, they are full of people who, over decades, have taken pride in this city and the services that they provided with this city. It's full of pictures of his family and other people's families. And we all know each other in DeKalb. I've learned that, right? You all know each other. You're all two steps away from each other in this community. That's what makes it so special. So he shows you pictures of the people who helped found some of the city services that you have. What worries me, knowing these people, is that we're not talking about the erosion of services. We're talking about the erosion of your identity as a city. And so I just ask that, I implore you, as you consider these items, please consider the people that are these items. The people that they represent, and the services that they represent truly to those who live and work here. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Sarah. We have two, two more speakers. The first is Jacob Burlingame.
I'm very tall. Hello.
Hello.
Thanks for hearing me tonight. This is the first time I have come to speak to the city council, so I hope I get this generally in the right direction. Jacob Burlingame, second ward. I came with a couple of things that I wanted to say, and it seems like we've hit most of the points that I was concerned with, but I have been thinking a lot lately about these recent uptick in crime. And hearing a couple of things about the pension funding for police and our reduction in the general fund has me a little bit worried. My uncle was a police officer for a long time. One of my good friends from high school works in Chicago right now. I teach at St. Charles North High School, where a lot of kids go through the fire program at Mid Valley. And I see the, the work that they do in an often dangerous profession. And it concerns me that, I wanna make sure that the pensions are funded to the fullest extent possible. They do, you know, like I said, a dangerous job, and put their lives on the line sometimes. When they walk out the door, don't always know that they're gonna come back. And so I would hate to see the, the work that they do go, you know, unrecognized when it's time for them to retire. So please consider funding their pensions to the fullest extent possible. I'm also concerned with the general fund decrease. We're talking about five percent cuts across the board. We heard a lot about that tonight. If we're experiencing an uptick in crime right now, it seems like the wrong time to cut funding to health and safety, or, you know, fire and safety services. And I'm gonna say something that maybe is a little bit unpopular. No one likes to raise taxes, but if you're gonna, you know, if we're gonna talk about the options between maybe cutting police if we're down to, you know, four officers in the entire city of DeKalb at times, or my property taxes go up, you can raise my property taxes. Thank you.
Thank you, Jacob. And our last speaker is our former mayor, Bessie Cronopoulos.
And I'm too short.
You went from tall to short. Did you get that down there?
Okay, very good. I, I am consistently amazed as to how articulate the public is. Will, I don't think I've ever heard you in better form. Mr. Brown, you just amaze me, and you don't even have a computer. You know, and, and you do your homework, and you come here time and time again and articulate specific points. You're wonderful. This young gentleman, so articulate, and the young lady. Sarah? Sarah? Very good. And Sarah, I couldn't agree with you more. The people that I have known that have worked in this city hall, who live and work here and have done so for many, many years, and Ron, you'll attest to that, are the kind of people that you want working for your city. There are people who've gone through floods- There are people who have gone through floods and snowstorms and everything else, and they are part of this city, there's no question. The people who live and work here and have done so for many years, they are the heartbeat of this community. Mayor, I'm delighted to see that you have taken to heart some of the things that many people have spoken up about over the last few months that you've been mayor. And I'm glad that you are pulling the council together and that the council is articulating as well on many subjects and asking questions and coming out. I love it. I love to see this going on. This is what many of us who have been coming forward, and I know it's not popular, I know that some people don't like us speaking out, but by golly, we're going to continue doing it because it's important and it motivates you, our elected officials, who are encumbered with the task of making the difficult decisions. And boy, oh, boy, do we ever have talent on this FAC. And you know what? This process, and one of the things that many of us who have been speaking before the FAC and the council have been begging for is an earlier start in the process. It's an ongoing process, it doesn't happen two weeks before the budget is supposed to be passed. That is a tremendous strain and very unfair to the talent that is here and that contribute so much. I'm not good with numbers, that's not my forte. I expect you folks to pull those things out with the help of many people on council who are also good with the facts and the figures. And today I saw this shine. And that gives me a glimmer of hope that we're on the right path to discussing very straightforwardly and in detail what needs to be done. And yes, we do need to look at total tax reform throughout the state, and we probably should be the place right here in DeKalb that might change things. Well, you're right, this is maybe where the changes should happen because we're stuck with some antiquated tax, taxing structures in this state which encumber not only DeKalb but many other cities. We need to look at how our properties are assessed. There's a lot of things in the big picture that also need to be looked at. But this is what we need to happen all the time, and this process has got to be ongoing, not starting just a couple of weeks before. And that is attributed to the top of the chain over here. This should never, ever happen again where this body of talent has to do crunch time for such critical information. So, yes, Chief, I will still keep talking, and I hope this is positive enough. It's positive, but it's impassioned because, you know what? We love our city, we all do. Thank you. Thank you for what you're doing.
Maybe we should stop on that warm and fuzzy message. Thank you, Bessie. It is 8:00, is that 8:15?
Yes.
8:15. We've been here now for about 3 hours and 15 minutes. Why don't we just sort of agree to agree to meet for no longer than 15 more minutes if we want to use that time? Does that sound agreeable to Finance Committee, Finance Advisory Committee, and Council? So, given that we have about 15 minutes, or even less if we'd like, are there any comments, again, for the benefit of our audience and for those watching at home? And I'd like to remind you that we have made no decisions tonight, although I think we've reached some consensus that we're going forward, and there are some difficult decisions, obviously, that have to be made here over the next several weeks. Alderman Jacobson.
It amuses me to a point to hear the opposite perspective than I have in some of these issues. And I see a common thread oftentimes in some of the opposition to fiscal transparency and consistency and responsibility. And that fiscal thread is very apparent in terms of, it's the same people speaking out for status quo at all of our meetings, on the Chronicles website, on WLVK's website, on all these community groups and all these things. The people that are standing up most for status quo and for non-reform all have the common thread that they're pensioners and they're part of the union. It's amazing. And as I had a conversation with a resident today that all of you guys were copied on, again, I think it's imperative the council keeps its responsibility in mind that we represent the residents of DeKalb, the many. And it's our, it's imperative of us to stand up and do what's right for the many, not protect the very lucrative benefits of a few. And I think that's, again, in talking pension obligations, again, it amuses me to a point when I hear people saying, "Well, don't cut pension obligations, but put more into operations." Again, we don't, we have a limited budget, we have a limited pie of money to go around. And it's the salaries and benefits that have tied our hands in terms of the city for decades from providing the things that are our products, safety, putting adequate resources into the public safety and policing efforts, putting adequate resources into road funding, putting adequate resources into vehicles. And we're just now starting to get a taste of how we fund a piece of those things with the reality that we're still underfunding pensions. So, again, unless the growth percentage changes, unless somehow the math changes, the reality we face again this year, looking at this budget, looking at whether we cut or we don't cut or those things, those are symptoms. If we cut this year, it's to save enough money to get us through to next year where we can start adequately funding things. It's the give and take, we have to go. The reality is that in doing that, again, we're only dealing with those symptoms, we're only dealing with a one-year plan that includes a massive sales tax increase, hopefully not a massive property increase, property tax increase, but that's what was provided. And at the end of the day, the structural issues still remain. At the end of the day, we're still one of the highest tax rates in the nation, and that's where residents are frustrated. Residents aren't saying, "Well, I don't pay much in taxes, so I can't expect much in services." They're saying, "I pay much more in taxes than our neighbors, and yet my services keep getting cut." My roads that I drive on aren't adequate and are continuing to deteriorate. My service and needs for service, my call wait times are lessening or are lengthening. And that's where the residents are frustrated. You can't go and turn around every year and say, "Well, it's a little bit more, a little bit more that we need from you just to get us through this year." Something doesn't add up. If we're the highest, and at that highest, we still have to make cuts, something fundamentally is wrong. And whether that means the city's not receiving enough of the overall property tax bill, that may be the case. But then it's imperative us to reach out to the other taxing bodies, namely the school district, and tell them they need to be more responsible so we can take a bigger share of that bill to cover our thing, our necessities. One way or the other, this budget and this whole process and all these things, while we've made little itty-bitty inroads here and there, we still have not addressed the structural issues and challenges that have gotten us here. We still have not had that discussion, we still have not focused our efforts on what it's going to take going forward to make sure that it's not this process fighting over $10,000 expenditures every year to pay the bills and to keep the lights on. Structurally, we have a change we have to make, and I implore the Finance Advisory Committee, knowing you're starting early. The reality is, at this point, we don't have much time but to pass this budget. I certainly won't support it yet again this year. But through the course of the next 12 months, I will be bringing to the 27th meeting some very strong direction that I would hope the council would buy into and understand that we need to start addressing those things. Clearly, it's beyond staff's capability too. And again, it's a very difficult role, and no staff in the state of Illinois is dealing with it. So that's not a slight to our individual staff or individual people in our operation. It's a difficult idea, it's a very uncomfortable conversation, it's a very state-of-the-art discussion in terms of who's actually doing it right now and fixing some of those structural deficits and gaps to make sure that in the future, when we're looking at our five-year planning, that we have a chance at this thing. Otherwise, all this time and all this energy that we're spending will be wasted when the expenditures far outweigh the amount of taxes we can raise.
David, you are the senior alderman on this city council. And I, as a new mayor, have challenged you before, and you've answered the challenge. And I challenge you once again, and as I challenge everybody on the city council, we need to address this on a long-term basis. And I believe that what I hear tonight, between the Finance Advisory Committee and this city council, the fact that we're going to start the process, the 2019 process, early, and the fact that we can revisit the 2018 budget as we move forward, if need be, through the amendatory procedures, it makes some sense to me. Alderman Norrico.
I agree that we need to take a look at how we're doing business. Any good, effective organization does that. But as we do that, we can't forget the fact that the bulk of our financial obligation at this point is the pension obligation. The pension obligation for police and fire who went out there every day to protect us. And, you know, all the years that I've lived here, I've never worried or wondered if something happened, if they would be there. And they went out there with the expectation that they would be cared for when they retired. And this is addressing Sarah's comments about thinking about the people. And we have an obligation to honor that obligation to them. Chair Peddell talked about a fiduciary responsibility. Well, I think it goes above and beyond simply a fiduciary responsibility, we have a moral responsibility. And the best way we can do that is by doing what we are doing, thinking through our options carefully, and taking a look at what other options are out there. But not just, you know, in an effort to reach some mythical goal, but so that we are honest when we say to a police officer or a candidate that we're going to hire for police, you know, okay, commit to the city and the city will commit to you. And...
When do the residents get that same benefit? The residents as a whole of this community?
That is, that is part of our obligation to address this issue, but, okay, I will stop.
Alderman Markwart, did you want to say something?
Yeah.
You're smiling.
Yeah, you know, whatever. It's been one of them days. It's been a week of Mondays, and we've gotten a lot of information today. There's numbers up, numbers down. So it's really kind of hard to tell what's what on this thing. Which is why when we did the truth on taxation thing the other night, that initial thing, I understand the need to say capping at this one spot, but it doesn't really matter much until we actually set the number at, okay? So by stating that 5.2%, that's just nice for the public to, hey, we're going to keep our eye on that. But it does cloud the amounts a little bit because depending on how that all falls through, then we have to make it up in the general fund to make up that difference, and it gets further clouded by the dollars and the rates, which is an annoyance. So anyways, I'd like to thank Finance and HR for the staffing summary. Appreciate seeing that and how that goes through. I have a philosophy question that I think we sort of need to answer as far as how we want to proceed, and this is just the way I see it. There's a couple of different ways that we can go about this in my mind. One, we can cut to make the dollars work, right? And as we all know, that cuts services, that cuts this, this cuts that. And the other option is, how do we want to get out of this? Do we want to do it through attempting to go for growth? And if we're wanting to do that through growth, as Will said, we're kind of starting that growth period a little bit. There's, I mean, it's not a lot, but there's a little bit there. Are we going to cut our throat off or cut whatever, cut that growth by eliminating these services? One that I hear about a lot is the building part, where if we continue to cut that, you know, builders are sometimes having to wait two weeks longer to get things, or three weeks, and it's not a service. And if we're going to cut it, then we're just frustrating that all the more. And so we don't have investment into our community, because people are going, "I don't want to deal with that stuff." If we cut our, and I'm using building and I'm using the inspection part, because if we cut that, then we don't have the inspections, and so then people kind of do whatever they want, and we don't have the crime-free housing, looking at those various things, and then that affects crime, and then we add additional things that go into, for the police department to do. So I don't want to cut our own throat by cutting too much. So I see two different philosophies here. We either cut, and we cut services and we don't service anybody, or are we going to invest in DeKalb in some form and fashion so that we can stimulate that growth and give the employees of DeKalb the resources to continue what we've started? That's the way I see it. We got one or two options, and, you know, I've seen companies go through this too, where they cut, 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 and the next thing you know, they're out of business. You have to be specific and strategic about what you're trying to cut, and it isn't necessarily people that gets you through it.
We have a dilemma, that's for sure, and we have a challenge. It's 8:29, does, do I have any final comments from anybody on the Finance Advisory Committee? If not, I entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting.
So moved.
Can we do that jointly?
Yep.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved, we're adjourned.